Good evening to everyone. We will call the April fourth City Council meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, if we can have the roll call and posting of the agenda, please.
Councilmember Basua?
Here.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Here.
Councilmember Perello?
Here.
Councilmember Turan?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Mayor Protem McDonough?
Here.
We have a quorum, and the agenda for this meeting was posted in the City Hall Bulletin Board on March twenty third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you very much. And for the record, the mayor is unable to be with us tonight. He's under the weather, but we expect him back very, very soon. So... With that, we will go to public comments on closed session items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mayor Protem McDonough, we do not have any speakers virtually or in person.
Okay, with that, we are scheduled to go into closed session at five thirty for conference of legal counsel. Mr. Fisher, do you have any, any statement to read?
Just to summarize the item that we're going in on, the City Council will recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine, five six point nine subdivision D four, based on existing facts and circumstances to decide whether to initiate litigation in one potential case.
Thank you very much. With that, we will recess to close, or we will move to closed session, and we expect to be back at six P M.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. We're ready to start rolling again, people. Okay, Mr. Fisher, City Council has returned from closed session. Is there any reportable action to report out?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There are no actions to report from closed session this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Takes us to item D1, Opening Ceremonies. And Councilwoman Basu, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Of course.
And we will have a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you all. Good evening, everyone. My apologies, Mayor Zaragoza was unable to join us tonight, so you'll have the number two guy doing the festivities here. Takes us to item D1, City Clerk's Department. Pardon me, I have to put my cheaters on. And the subject is to declare results of the canvas of returns of the March 7, 2023 special municipal election and administer the oath of office. And the recommendation is that the City Council adopt a resolution declaring the results of the canvas of returns of the March 7, 2023 special municipal election in District 6 and the city of Oxnard. And two, although it says authorize the city clerk, my understanding is we will have a guest presenter doing the oath of, administering the oath of office, that'll be Supervisor Dawes Williams from Santa Barbara County, and I don't know if he's shown up yet or not. Okay, we'll make it work. We'll take comments from everybody, he'll be here eventually, so. And this will be for the oath of office to the newly elected council member, Arthur Valenzuela Jr., followed by remarks from council members and also from any speakers, if anyone has any comments. So if our guest oath person is not here, we'll take the comments and then do the oath afterwards, so we'll make it work. So, Ms. Fisher, are you going to do the results of the canvas, or is the city clerk going to do that for us?
I hadn't planned on it, so, Madam Assistant City Clerk, are you going to handle this item, or would you like me to wing it?
To swear in, I think that Councilmember Valenzuela has been sworn in already in the office.
Yes, so the city clerk who's absent tonight has already sworn in council member Valenzuela. And what we're doing tonight is more the formality, the declaration of results, so the prerequisite for swearing in was the certification of results from the elections official, which Michelle Asensio, county clerk recorder and elections official issued that a week or two ago, and that I believe is in the, is in your packet. So what we would need now is a motion and a second for adoption of the resolution declaring the results of the canvas of returns of the March 7, 2023 election.
Okay. Do council members have any comments before we get to an action item? Councilmember Tran?
Thank you. Just asking the city clerk, or this isn't city clerk or the city attorney, do we need to read into the record the numerical results of the election?
Well, I can go over that, and, so the certification from the clerk recorder registrar voters for the county stated that the fact of the election that occurred on March 7, 2023, and the clerk certified that the total ballots cast at the city of Oxnard District 6 short-term special municipal vacancy election were 63 votes cast at the vote center, 1,406 vote by mail ballots were cast, for a total of 1,530 ballots cast. And the results were that Arthur Valenzuela Jr. had the most votes at a total of 618, and the second place candidate had 551 total votes, and the third place candidate 300 votes. So Arthur Valenzuela Jr. is the winner of that election.
Thank you very much.
Real quick, before you start, Mr. Fisher, I've just been informed that Spectrum apparently is not carrying the feed for this meeting. Does that mean we have to stop, or are we still able to go on?
Yes, the, well, let me check my YouTube feed, but I believe the YouTube feed is still going. And we are not, we don't have any council members remotely participating that would preclude.
Okay, perfect, we'll continue on that.
Doing it when the feed goes down.
I'm sure there's a spectrum, or a joke in there somewhere, but I'll leave it tonight, so. That was my question, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for addressing that. With that, I'm willing to move the recommended action.
Okay.
To certify the city of Oxnard District 6 short-term special municipal vacancy election.
Second.
Mayor Protem, excuse me, Mayor Protem McDonald, we have speakers on this item.
I'm sorry. Okay. D1. Okay, I have a speaker card here for, okay, Michael McDonald? And I know you're asking out there, he has not any relation to me in any way, shape, or form, so, he's better looking than I am, too.
But it is McDonald, so, we could be.
Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Valenzuela, first time I get to say that, and it feels good saying that. I wanted to take a moment out and offer my heartfelt congratulations on your recent victory in winning this seat. It's really a testament to your hard work, your dedication, and your unwavering commitment to making a positive change in our community. Your tireless efforts as a community organizer has been an inspiration, I know, to me and to many of us, and I have no doubt that you will continue to do great things and make significant impacts to the city of Oxnard as a city council member. Your passion for advocating for the needs of the people and working towards social justice will be a valuable asset to the city in shaping the city's future. Thank you for your leadership and your willingness to step up and serve your community, and I look forward to seeing all that you will accomplish in this community, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask that we not applaud, please, ordinarily we don't allow it, but, so, if you indulge me, I'd appreciate it. Next speaker will be Manuel Herrera, and followed by Joshua Medrano.
Members of the City Council, City Manager's staff, I am Manuel Herrera, creator of Citizens for a Better Oxnard. I wanted to congratulate Councilman Arthur Valenzuela for his victory as the new council representative for District 6. The voters have spoken, and Mr. Valenzuela is the person whom the majority of the voters in District 6 decided would be the best representative. This position comes with a lot of responsibility, but I'm sure Mr. Valenzuela will be up for the task. I also want to invite Councilman Valenzuela to visit and reach out whenever possible to the 13,700 members of Citizens for the, for a Better Oxnard. This page was created so that the people of Oxnard could get to know our city officials, and so that our council members would have a place in which to inform our citizens of their agenda. So once again, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. And the next speaker will be Joshua Medrano.
Good evening, esteemed council, newly-elect council member Arthur Valenzuela. My name is Joshua Medrano. I am the Executive Secretary/Treasurer of the Tri-County's Building and Construction Trades Council, and we are here to congratulate you on your election win. Sometimes family, sometimes we don't agree, but that's okay, because it builds character, and it builds bonds, and it builds ties. I am here tonight to reassure everybody that the Tri-County I am here tonight to reassure everybody that the Tri-County's Building Trades is union through and through. We are here to offer our support, we are here to let you know that we know it's not going to be an easy feat for you. Whatever we can do to help, discussions, we are here, as well as for the rest of this council. So we are here to lend the support and congratulate you on your win.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to open up the comment period to council members. If any of the council members on the dais have any comments for our newest member, now would be the time to provide them. And I'll get to you last, Mr. Valenzuela, we'll let you respond to everything. Councilmember Turan?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to congratulate, can we call him councilman, he hasn't been sworn in for the ceremony just yet, but we'll say Councilmember Valenzuela. The responsibility, as was mentioned by members of the public, is great, but those who step up to take on that responsibly are to be commended and know that they're getting into this because of their love of community and what they'd like to do and to contribute to that community in a positive way. So I appreciate you being willing to be one of those folks to continue to lead Oxnard on its continued progress as a city and continued enhancement of what we have out in our community. And as someone who's also grown up here, you know, I'm happy to see many lifelong residents who are stepping up regardless of age group, to know what they can contribute and be able to contribute to that through this level of community involvement. So thank you very much, Councilmember Valenzuela, looking forward to working with you to serve our community.
Thank you. Councilwoman Basuya, you requested to speak?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to Councilmember-elect Valenzuela. I am definitely looking forward to our working relationship and to continue the work that Supervisor Lopez started as the first member elected in District 6. So welcome aboard, congratulations, and definitely looking forward to our working relationship.
Thank you. Councilmember Perello?
I'd like to welcome you aboard, Arthur, and wish you the very best of luck. I would also like to congratulate and thank the other individuals that decided to run, step up. When you enter an election, it's not fun. It's an eye-opening, life-changing experience. So all three individuals that offered themselves up to represent District 6 deserve credit. Mr. Valenzuela is the winner, he deserves the credit. I'm sure the council and he will work well together. Best of luck.
Thank you. Councilmember Madrigal?
Thank you, Arthur. Congratulations. Known you for about 10 years, and I know your love for community is very deep. I know that it was a goal of yours to be on the city council, and now actually, the easy part is done, but I know that you will do great in being a representative for District 6, so congrats.
And I will just echo all the comments that were made. Welcome aboard. We're glad to have a full set of members again. Look forward to moving to the future. It's pleasant for me in that I've been here for a long time, and I know a lot of your family members, and I used to eat a lot at El Dorado, which I believe was your grandparents', if I remember correctly. Excellent food, and I'm sorry, they're no longer with us, they'd be very proud of you. I worked with your sister here, I see your mom where I shop, that's where she works, so it's like old home week. Congratulations. It was a well-fought effort, and welcome aboard. So, and I don't know if Dawes is here yet or not, I haven't seen him. No, not gonna make it? Okay, then, Mr. Fisher, if I can borrow your script, I will pinch-hit.
Excuse me, Councilman, Mayor Protem McDonald, is it a possibility I can ask my friend Jonathan Abud, who's the president of the Santa Barbara Community College Trustees, to give the oath of office?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Jonathan Abud?
So the council-
Did you have any comments before you take your oath of office, or you want to do that afterwards?
I could do it afterwards.
Okay.
And before we do the oath, can we have the vote on the motion with Councilmember Valenzuela not participating in that vote?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote. Okay. Let's, um-
Can you do a roll call?
Do this by voice vote, then.
Councilmember Turan?
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Perello?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, and what would be the best, would you like to stand in front of the dais with your person doing the oath of office? Okay. Come on in, sir, come on in, and you'll stand right here in front of the dais. No. There we go. And I'm gonna date myself, saying this is a Kodak moment here, but probably nobody knows what a Kodak is anymore, they all use cell phone for pictures. But if you want to walk up and take pictures, please feel free. Here.
I, Arthur Valenzuela Jr. Do solemnly swear- Do solemnly swear- That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States- That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States- And the Constitution of the State of California- And the Constitution of the State of California- Against all enemies, foreign and domestic- Against all enemies, foreign and domestic- That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States- That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States- And the Constitution of the State of California- And the Constitution of the State of California- That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation- That I take this obligation freely, without any reservation- Or purpose of evasion- Or purpose of evasion- And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. And that I will, time one more time. That I will well and faithfully discharge- That I will well and faithfully discharge- The duties upon which I am about to enter. The duties I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember, if you want to make any comments from down there, feel free, then afterward, we'll take about a 15-minute recess, so you can talk with your folks there.
Of course. Right, yeah, well, I just want to say I'm eternally grateful to my friends and family and to the voters of District 6 for putting me in this position. You know, I first ran for city council when I was 21 years old, back in 2013, where Councilmember Perello was first elected, or is he right there? Yeah, and I, you know, thought, you know, it took someone with a lot of love and persistence for their community to get elected to this position, and I think I learned a big lesson when it came to really putting community first. And it's something I always put forward in my community involvement when it came to, one, like, pushing forward district elections, so our communities can be represented, you know, defending our community from another power plant on our beaches, and also making sure our community is safe for our undocumented residents. And, you know, I think I've just learned over the years to really be here and be present for the community. And I'm just totally grateful. I think there's a couple people I want to thank for this who are no longer here, are the reason, like, I really feel like motivated me and pushed me for this. I think first of all is my grandfather, who passed away right before Christmas during the election season. You know, being the first union member of our family to be an LWU member, and, you know, putting our family on a track, you know, for prosperity. And that's something I really wanted to push for other families to have those same opportunities for economic, improve economic standards of living. Second is my former high school teacher, Robert Borneman, who passed away during the Super Bowl this past year. You know, I did act as director of Catholic with him and was a TA for his government classes, and really taught me about the persistence for questioning government and being involved into it. And third was actually the passing, I think most of us know as a good friend and mentor to a lot of us, Carmen Ramirez, who I first met a decade ago, and was always a key ally and supporter of the progressive causes I valued and treasured. So I wanted to say thank you all very much, and to my family who showed up, my friends, and all the community members I've interacted with for the past 10 years. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, gentlemen, watch you up to have coffee, get the first cup of tea, shake Arthur's hat. Congratulations, and we'll be in recent for about a 15-minute break, while Arthur works around the corner. Whatever you don't eat, the city man drove, they call it.
I don't have any.
[laughter][117.72]
Excellent. I have here a proclamation for Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month, April of 2023. And it reads, whereas April is designated as Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month, and whereas sexual assault and child abuse are crimes that affect all races, cultures, and social demographics, and has a profound impact on the family and the community, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate than the national average, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to these atrocious crimes, and whereas Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for the residents to learn more about preventing sexual assault and child abuse, and to show support for numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to survivors, and whereas the City of Oxnard Police Department and community-based organizations are in a position to provide education, information, and services to assist survivors in believing that they have a right to feel safe and live free from violence at home and in the community. And whereas we recognize the survivors of abuse whose courage inspires us all, we recommit to offering a helping hand to those in need, and we remind them that they are not alone. And whereas we must continue to stand alongside advocates, survivor service providers, law enforcement, and our criminal justice system as they hold offenders accountable, and provide care and support to survivors during the darkest moments of their life. And whereas the City of Oxnard Police Department urges all of its residents to take a stand against sexual assault, child abuse by raising awareness about these issues, and the resources available to survivors seeking to escape abuse, and whereas we will continue our efforts to end violence in our home, schools, and communities. Now therefore, the Mayor of Oxnard, John Zaragosa, does hereby proclaim April 2023 as Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month in the City of Oxnard, and he has affixed the city seal and a signature here to this proclamation. So Sergeant Scott Aaron, would you like to introduce everyone that you have with you?
Yes, I've got my investigators here, some of my investigators. I've got Detective Myra Gonzalez, Detective Mary Panza, my missing person specialist Judy Basco, Detective Haley Navarro, and Detective Corporal Juan Morales. These are some of the great folks that do some of the hardest work in the city dealing with child abuse and sexual assault. So I'd like to thank them, but also like to thank our community partners that we partner with to help us combat these corporal crimes.
Thank you. Any members of your group wish to make any comments?
No.
No? With that, thank you all very much. Thank you for your work and your dedication to our community. Next proclamation is National Library Week. I don't know if we have a representative. Teague, is that you? Okay, our next proclamation is National Library Week, April 23rd to 29th, 2023. And whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life, whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve, and ensure equity of access for all, and whereas libraries adopt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships, and whereas libraries play a critical role in economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. So therefore, the Mayor of Oxnard, John Cesar Agosa, proclaims National Library Week to be April 23rd, 29th to the 29th, 2023, and during this week, he would encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. And he's affixed here to the seal of the city and his signature. So I'll present this to Mr. Harrison and ask you if you would introduce your cadre of people. Any comments?
Good evening, everybody. Our library is part of our Cultural and Community Services Department, and I'm really excited for its future, but I'm also excited about what it has coming this week. So I'm going to ask Marlene, our seventeen-year employee, to introduce everybody and talk about what we have going on this week in the library.
Thank you, Terrell. This is Alex Anad, Patty Rose, Maria Herrera, Tammy Zabinski, Jay Otani.
Brian McDonald.
I didn't see you at work today. And I'm Marlene Cristal. We are dedicated to the library. We love helping the community. It's much more than just checking books out. We're real excited about the last week in April. This week, we have our usual storytime and toddler storytime. On Saturday, we have a Parents, Pages, and Pastry program starting at 10:30, and parents can come with their children and visit our Homework Center where they can pick up a pastry and some water and read to their children and learn about the Homework Center, which is a really great place. Kids can get help with their homework. We're just very dedicated to the community and happy to be there, glad we're back open. There's just so much that we do. So thank you very much.
Anyone else have any comments?
Tammy? No? Okay.
Thank you all for the work that you are getting. Yes? No? No? It's like open mic night at the comedy club or something. No?
I just wanted to say that Oxnard Public Library and many other public libraries that have opened their doors to every single person in the community have adapted and evolved along with all of the technological changes that we've experienced over the last ten, five, the last week, over the very near future. And we intend to continue evolving with those changes to meet the needs of every last person in Oxnard. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that all of you do for our community and serving the public here. So well-deserved proclamation. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, we don't usually have comments on the ceremonial calendar, but I figured I'd ask anyway. Are there any speakers?
That's correct, Mayor Protem McDonald.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to public comments and items not on the agenda. This would be for items that are under the purview of this body, but not as an agendized item. And I have, last checked, about thirteen or fourteen speakers. So I will call them in the order which they were given to me, and you will have three minutes each. You certainly don't have to take all three minutes, but you are entitled to it if you like. So we will start out first with Brenda Guzman, or Guzman, followed by Ronald Aruejo. You just pull it down a little. There you go.
Break anything. Send me a bill. Haku haku, washutz ishow. Good evening, City Council members. I'm Brenda Guzman, Ventura resident, but I work and speak with many of the Oxnard community, the homeless community. I appreciate you all being here today and the way you serve the communities that you represent. I was hoping Mayor Zaragosa was here so I can address him, but that's okay. I have a lot of respect for everything that you all do for our communities, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure the community does also. So what I want to say is, I hope that it does, what I have to give today is, I hope it doesn't offend you or the work that you do, because I do understand how hard it is to work for the community. As you can see today, I come before you on behalf of the homeless community that I work with and that I speak with on a regular basis, Monday through Friday, and on the weekends when I'm out there contributing my own personal time and meals to them. As you can see today, they're not here. They're not here because they don't have access to the internet, they don't have access to the website, they don't have access to come here, and I mean that by saying if they want to go to a shelter, they have to check in at 5 o'clock, 4:45, to get a bed, a hot meal, and a shower. And so they don't have those luxuries of being here tonight. That was the first thing. Second thing is, they must check in. Third is, they don't make the shelter times available for them. If they go afterwards, especially when it was raining, there's no way they could get in. The beds are limited, and they don't have places for women to go to. There's no walk-in night service for women, and our women are out there on the street, the homeless women. Not all of our homeless are drug addicts, or, you know, a lot of them have mental illnesses, a lot of them have mental health issues, a lot of them are just down on their luck. There's a lot of stories out there that you don't know, and you may, they come from all over, all levels of education. There's ladies and men out there with master's degree that have just been unfortunate in this time. They get ticketed for being out there, they get for unlawful loitering, for unlawful camping, for unlawful storage, when the only belongings they have is a walker and their items attached to it. Bus drivers don't want to give them a ride because they have their items with them. So I know that my time is going over, so I just hope that you all take the time to go out and meet them and introduce yourself and let them know that they matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ronald Aruejo, and I apologize for if I messed your name up. I've always had trouble with it. I apologize.
No problem.
You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem McDonald, City Council and staff. My name is Ronald Aruejo, and I'm the Chair of the East Village Neighborhood. The East Village Neighborhood would like to use this opportunity to thank the support of the city in furtherance of increasing awareness of issues important to the community. The recent policy change to allow authorized users in the Neighborhood Council access to funds to support meetings and other relevant activities has been a tremendous assistance and burden relief for the Neighborhood Council, as before, it was incumbent on the volunteer members to provide all of the supplies, materials, and/or refreshments for participants. On the Oxnard staff, we want to thank Mr. Adam Smith for his communication and work as it relates to the INCO to keep all the neighborhoods informed, and Ms. Stephanie Shapiro for serving as the neighborhood's main point of contact with any and all questions regarding the meetings and city regulations, in addition to helping us at numerous times to connect us with the appropriate people and information. We hope on behalf of the East Village, the INCO, and all of Oxnard that not only is this support sustained, but more is added in the coming fiscal year to further assist the neighborhoods. Lastly, we welcome and appreciate when our representative, Councilman Magrigo, speaks with us, and for Mayor Zaragosa's first time to present his vision with us. The meetings in the past six months, at which the two of them were our best-attended meetings in the past five years, and I think it's obvious that we will be inviting them both again in the next three to nine months. Our attendees have also noted that they would like to hear from other members of the City Council, as you all have a say in matters with the East Village, whether or not you are on our ballot, and so we are looking forward to extending an invitation in the coming year to the councilpersons adjacent to us, at least to start, that being Councilman Turan, Councilwoman Basua, and Mayor Protem McDonald. The East Village has been meeting every two to three months, but in part because of the increased support of the city, we are looking at increasing that recurrence to every month after the summer. In addition to the city manager speaking with us next month, we're excited that not only one, but three countywide elected officials are planning to speak with our neighborhood later this year. The East Village Neighborhood thanks the city for their support, and we hope to keep a two-way communication to ensure that we both have the information to do what's in the best interest of Oxnard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Clerk, I have Dorina Padilla as the third speaker. Have we seen her yet?
Yes, Mayor Protem McDonald, she's in the waiting room. She's online virtually.
Okay. If we can have her speak next then, please, Ms. Padilla.
Ms. Dorina, please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you guys, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Hi, good afternoon. This is Dorina Padilla. I wanted to start off by thanking Mayor Protem McDonald, as well as the council members, especially, specifically newest elected Councilmember Valenzuela. I definitely know from personal experience what it takes, the energy, the time, and commitment it takes to serve the city in the capacity of elected officials. So congratulations, Member Valenzuela. I am just touching base today to provide the sister, I mean, the city and the community with some updates relevant to the Oxnard-Ocotlan Sister City Organization. So one, I wanted to provide everybody with the update that we've reestablished our formal partnership with the Sister Cities International Organization. So we are once again part of the larger national organization. Two, I wanted to remind all the council members and let the community formally know that the 2023 visitation will be taking place this year, August the 2nd through the 8th. We have a total of about fifty members from the city of Ocotlan that will be visiting the city this year. With that said, I wanted to invite all community members, as well as elected officials and city administration, to participate in the fund. Anybody can contribute by, one, hosting families, sharing in resources and knowledge, and attending events. So if there's any individuals who want to receive more information relevant to the activities of this year's visitation, they can send an email to oxnardocotlan@gmail.com. Again, we invite any member to participate, former, current members, as well as any future and prospective members. In addition to that, I just want to make sure that the community, as well as our elected officials, know that the Oxnard Sister City has a longstanding relationship since 1964, and that we, as an organization, want to reestablish our commitments with both departments of, our both public safety departments. So again, continue that rich tradition that we, as two cities, have shared for several years. And I think that's it for me. Again, council members, I want to thank you for your time, dedication.
Thirty seconds.
Energies to serving our city. And if anybody has any additional questions relevant to the Sister City Organization, again, please email oxnardocotlan@gmail.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Carolina Gallardo Magaña.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Protem and council members, and welcome to District Six, Mr. Valenzuela. We're welcome, and we want you to be more involved in our community. I was coming to just congratulate our newly-elected council member, but as I was driving by down on D Street, South D Street, I saw a fight. And this is because I have seen this issue where people put delineators, put cones, buckets, trashcans to reserve parking, and I have reported this through 311, and some actions have been taken, but the issue is still there. And so I saw somebody moving the trashcans in order for this person to park, and that's the street, it's a public parking. So, and if you go down on Chana Islands to Bryce Canyon, J and C, that square, you will see cones, delineators, anything, even illegal ramps. So what can the city do to prevent this? I mean, not to become something violent, perhaps a fight or something else? So, and then also I have seen homes with a lot of debris, perhaps fire hazard, in front of their home. And I live temporarily in the city of Port Winnimi, and I know in the city of Port Winnimi, we had to keep up our homes in the front, or we will get a letter, perhaps. I don't know what's the next step. I never got a citation, but I did hear from the neighbors. So what can the city do to improve this and to avoid people fighting for parking? I know parking is a big issue, but nobody has a right to reserve parking on a public space. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Chief Benitez if you could have maybe a B coordinator reach out to this person, please. And the next speaker is Monserrat Sanchez.
Good evening, Protem McDonald, City Manager, Nguyen, and City Council members. My name is Monserrat Sanchez, and I am the Vice President of the ACT Club at Oxnard High School, and part of the leadership team for the Youth Coalition of Oxnard. I'm here with other members of the YCO in hopes of getting our group agendized to the City Council meeting next month on May 8th. This academic school year, the YCO focused on finding ways to help Oxnard residents combat food insecurity. Our youth coalition members from four Oxnard Union High School district schools have been volunteering at local community gardens, where we conducted research about the benefits of being able to grow edible plants. We asked that City Council allow us, the youth of Oxnard, to attend this future meeting and present our findings. We believe that data we collected can help bring awareness to the importance of giving all Oxnard residents Oxnard access to green spaces and the ability to grow food for themselves and their families.
Thank you. Brenda Santos, please.
Good evening, Protem, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Brenda Santos. I'm also a youth coalition leader. Oh, thank you. I'm also a youth coalition leader and the treasurer of Oxnard Middle College High School ACT Club. I second Monserrat's request to have the YCO agendized next month. We have been working hard to collect information about the benefits of community gardens and are very excited to share the results with the city. We will bring a ten-to-twelve-minute presentation that will include photos of our visits to local community gardens and data from, data from the needs assessment survey to our youth coalition created and administrated amongst Oxnard residents. We see that the city is always working to implement assistant programs to help local community. The YCO would like to be of service and provide the city with additional ideas to benefit the people of Oxnard. Thank you, and I hope to be back here on May 8th to show our presentation.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Damian Mercado.
Good evening. My name is Damian Mercado. I am the Vice President of the Oxnard Middle College High School Act Club and a senior youth coalition leader. I hope to be at the May 8th City Council meeting if the Y, if the youth coalition is granted the opportunity to bring a presentation on the topic of community gardens as a way to combat food insecurity. I have had the pleasure of speaking here at city chambers and address the INCO, and I hope to do the same and can come address you, Mayor Protem McDonald, City Council members, and City Manager Ning Yu Yan?
Nguyen.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Katia Tran.
Mr. Mayor Protemp, esteemed City Council members and City Manager, thank you for considering our request. My name is Katia Tran. I am president of the Oxnard Middle College High School ACT Club and the YCO's core team lead. I would like to express our gratitude for listening to us during these public comments. I was a part of the YCO's presentation team last year during my freshman year of high school, when the YCO's leadership team gave a presentation on the topic of waste management. It was a great learning experience on communications and civic engagement. My previous team members all graduated high school, and I am the only returning team member from the original team. I hope you will again have the YCO come and present. The majority of the YCO members are currently fourteen- and fifteen-year-old, ninth and tenth graders. We have participated in many Oxnard Neighborhood Councils, INCO, and Town Hall meetings this school year to learn how to properly communicate with our city leaders. Please consider having us, the YCO, come and show you all that we have learned once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Duran.
Hello, City Council members, staff. Name's Jonathan Duran, representative with the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council Carpenters, Local 805. Just wanted to touch bases on something that was brought up, I think it was March 21st meeting, about the project labor agreement or CWA within the city. This is a great item to bring forward. It's going to generate local jobs, opportunities for people to come work here within the city of Oxnard, and also reduce a lot of the greenhouse gas from outside industry people coming in to come work. Myself, as I'm also in part of the, locally, I'm with the Career Connections. So at the Oxnard Unified School District, we have Oxnard High School, Adolfo Camarillo, and Rio Mesa that are participating in this program. And having this program is basically a streamlined process for students that want to go into construction and have an opportunity to streamline into our industry. The hardest part that we find within our, within our organization and the apprentices coming into the program is, hey, once you join the, any trade, hey, you're going to have to travel to go to work. Sometimes having local jobs and having opportunities to be able to work close to home and having these project labor agreements or CWAs here in place to help carry some of that burden away from those beginning construction apprentices allows them to work locally, and the money goes right back into the community itself. So again, like I said, I just wanted to come give our support for you guys to bring the CWA PLA back to the agenda and have a conversation about it, and let's move it forward. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Pedro Toscano.
Hi, good evening, council members, Mayor Protemp. Good evening. My name is Pedro Toscano, also a Southwest Mountain State Carpenter representative. We represent a big, a vast, big community here in the city of Oxnard. Overall, we have about 2,000-plus members and shared between, between three counties. Overall, we have about 2,000 plus members and shared between, between three counties, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo and Ventura. In Oxnard, we, we have the most members here. A lot of them, they wanna work in the area. We would like to, my rep, my, my responsibility is, as an organizer, is to help them kind of fulfill that. Work in the area, be close to home so that daddies could attend functions. You know, we're approaching culminations that time of season and, you know, we would like to fulfill those, 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 those requests for our members. We do have partnerships with education facilities that have come and toured our facility so that we could, they could see that we, we, we are educating everybody, we are doing our diligence in what the President of the United States has called for. Skilled and trained. And that's, that's what we're just advocating for is that we would like to put our members to work. We would, our, our books are filling out with young men and young women that are gonna graduate pretty soon from high schools and they just want a career path. When I was a kid, I didn't have no direction. I didn't know where, where to go. So I, first thing I did was find a warehouse job. That really was, you know, low wages for me. I wanted something more. And when I found this career, it, it was, it was exactly what I wanted. You know, it paid me the right wages, it, it paid me health and benefits and, and, and that's what I wanna provide to all those young men and young women, a direction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Reverend Greg Runyon.
Councilman McDonald and council, it's good to see everybody. Are there, congratulations, I think that's awesome. I, I wanna say that there were two things I came up for. First one was, I think all of us saw, heard what happened in New York City today with former President Trump and just that whole experience and. But I, I was reminded of something, I heard somebody say, well, he wasn't my president. And I thought, that's a really sad statement. We, I, I may not agree with the man. I don't have to care for his politics, I don't have to care for his position. But it always worries me when I hear things like that. Because, you know, I hope for all of you that you realize that you were elected in a nonpartisan race. I don't know that it, it, you were asked if you were a Democrat or Republican in your filing papers, I know that in the thing that I remember, it's a nonpartisan race. And so whether or not you were voted for, but for someone, you are our council member. And I really challenge all of you as you sit there. There are times that you need to vote what you think is right and then there are other times you need to listen to the citizens. And citizens should not be looked at as red or blue, Democrat or Republican. They're a resident of the city of Oxnard and they all deserve to be treated fairly and equitably. And I hope that you all are able to take a role of leadership and really show what it means to be a good citizen, a good American. And that there is a fabric in our country that's being torn away. And it's civility and it's acceptance, it's tolerance. There are words we use, but we rarely exemplify them. We had a shooting in Nashville that one day I hope and pray never happens here. But all the labels were used. Anti-Christian, homophobic, transphobic, all these things. And it was completely lost that six people lost their life and a seventh. And it all comes down to this idea that we've forgotten how to get along, we've forgotten how to talk, we've forgotten how to be civil. One of my greatest conversations I had was with Bert Perillo outside when Bert and I didn't agree. And we ended up laughing all night because you know what we did? We sat down and we talked, actually, we stood up and we talked. But we realized there was more common in us than there was opposite. So I hope you all on the dais and in the crowd will take some leadership and learn how to be civil to one another. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jose Arias.
Good evening, council members, my name is Jose Arias. I'm a Southwest Mountain State Regional Council member from Local 805 here in Camarillo. I'm a resident of the county, the city. First, I'm gonna thank you, Mr. Valenzuela, for their winning. And just to remind you that don't forget about District Six. There's a lot of needs there, so we need to voice in there. I got something else to talk about. It's about the PLA. We need a PLA here in the city, citywide PLA. There's a lot of work that's been given away to people that come from another places. We need people to work local. I'm a member of a union. It's hard for us to look for work right here in the city. We have to drive all the way to LA. We spend a lot of money in other, other cities. Money that, that we will be spending here, we local, we work in here local. Just put this on, on your mind. We need work local and if you do a PLA, it's gonna be good pay. So we're gonna be able to afford housing, able to, to afford, to be outside with our family, to enjoy the city that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Whitecomb.
Good evening, my name is Angela Whitecomb. I'm the Chair for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I am calling, I just wanna come up for two items. I really wanna let you guys know that we are going to be welcoming the, the Youth Coalition to our, to our upcoming April meeting where they will have a dry run on what they're gonna present to you when they, they're added to the City Council's agenda. But we really support what they did. I saw them come out to the, the Dr. Lopez Community Garden and they worked with some of the, the younger children that were there and it was just, it was a fantastic day. And then I also wanted to, thank you, City Council, for approving all the hard work and the, the things that are going on in our parks, all of the new excellent bathrooms and the play structures that are going on. I know that Lyons Park has gotten a lot of work. I do have a question though, because it looks like it's ready to go and then it stopped a couple weeks ago. And I don't know why. It was, it, we're all very gung ho and excited to see that park be rejuvenated. It's getting a new playground. And, well, I wanna see how that bathroom works out 'cause it's the first one that we're gonna have up and running. So, and that's a self-cleaning bathroom where you go in and you're in there all by yourself and it's all automated and then it, when you exit the bathroom, it disinfects. So, kind of a, you know, this is new technology for the city. So I'm super excited about it and I, I guess I'm a little impatient. But if you guys could, just to find out what the holdup is, that would be fantastic. And that's it. I'll come back later on another agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Chief, I don't know if you heard me earlier, I was wondering if you or one of your staff could talk with Mrs. Magaña about, about her parking problem. Thank you. And then Pat Brown, please. Well, you've got a speaker card here.
I'm down at the report.
Okay. I'm sorry, the one that got handed to me said comments not on the agenda. But which report did you wanna talk about? Which report did you want to talk about?
The one here on housing development.
Okay, let me renumber your card and I'll call you when we get to that. Okay, that ends our comments on items not on the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald?
Yes, ma'am.
We have no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Yeah, one of these, one of these end years, I'll get it right sometime, but I'm getting closer. Thank you very much. Okay, takes us to item G, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. If I could ask Diego to launch the slides, I have only three quick announcements tonight. All right, so the first one is announcing that we have an upcoming public meeting, public workshop regarding the city updating our landscape standards. So you may recall, not too long ago, we did a partial update of our city's fees and one of those fees dated back to 1972. Well, our landscape standards date back to 1988. So it's high time to update them. So there will be a series of public meetings. So this one that's scheduled for this Thursday, April 6. The first one, this one will be focused, a focused discussion with local and regional landscape professionals. Other members of the public are welcome to attend, but please know that there'll be two additional meetings announced at a later time focused on residential landscaping and will outreach to residents for those meetings as well. So again, it's this Thursday, April 6. The meeting is scheduled in the afternoon, starting at 4:00 PM, scheduled for two hours from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. It will be at the main library here in downtown Oxnard, meeting room B. The address is 251 South A Street. So again, it's at the main library this Thursday afternoon at 4:00 PM. A discussion regarding our attempts to update our landscaping standards throughout the city. If you have any quick questions before that meeting, feel free to call Assistant Public Works Director, Mr. Steve Howlett. His phone number is 805-385-7900. So we hope the landscape professionals can take time out of their busy schedules to attend this meeting to help us work through this process. Next, this is an effort that's been going on for, I believe, well over a decade. This is an update town hall meeting with regard to Ormond Beach, specifically the Ormond Beach Restoration and Public Access Project, otherwise known as OBRAP. This town hall is scheduled on Monday, April 24th, beginning at 6:00 PM at the South Oxnard Community Center, which is at 200 East Bard Road. So we're going to be in, in conjunction with our partners at Ormond Beach, the Nature Conservancy and the Coastal Conservancy. They'll all be there with us. We're going to discuss with the community what we are proposing in terms of long-term ownership and management of the open space that is held at Ormond Beach by the Nature Conservancy, the Coastal Conservancy, and a little bit of it by the city. The three partners want to discuss with the public what we're planning, get feedback and answer questions people may have. So there will be Spanish interpreters available at the meeting and it's also available via Zoom. All the information's there, we have that on the city's website as well as pushing it out over social media. So looking forward to discussing the next tangible steps for Ormond Beach's public restoration access project. And the final announcement is for, is a public service announcement to, for everyone to expect the coming weed super bloom. Thanks to all the rain we've had, obviously, one of the things that follows besides a little bit more water into the ground is the weeds are gonna go nuts. And as you can see on the flyer here, unfortunately, not the Cheech and Chong kind. So let us know when you see overgrown weeds throughout the city and be patient. Use the 311 app. Let us know, we'll get to it as soon as we can. But there's going to be a lot of weed growing up, sprouting all over the city. We're, we're very grateful for the rain, obviously. We're also grateful that it didn't cause the kind of damage and harm that it did in many other California communities this winter. So let's count our blessings, add up some of the water that's going back into our ground. And yes, we will do our best to take care of the weeds. So let us know, utilize the 311 app and be patient. You're gonna, going to see a lot of it. This is what happens when you get this much rain. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do council members have any questions or comments for our City Manager? No, see, none. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on, on his report?
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, we have no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to City Council Housing and Authority Business. If council members have any quick announcements of items they've been involved in, now would be the time. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just have a couple of quick updates here. First, thank you for the update on the landscape standards. I hope our professionals will head out to that. I didn't know until we saw that flyer right now that the landscape standards are the same age as my sister, who just had her birthday last week. So happy 35th birthday to our landscape standards and to my sister Tiffany. So, all right. I wanna say thank you to all who turned out for the District 2 Town Hall meeting on March 22, including our Youth Coalition of Oxnard who came out and helped with collecting contact info for folks who don't typically attend Neighborhood Council meetings. Your presence was very well received and I appreciate all the work that you all did that evening. Thank you to our City Manager, Mr. Alex Nguyen, for presenting as well. I heard very good things about the presentation and very eye-opening. I hope folks will take the opportunity to view it at their next Neighborhood Council meeting that it comes to. This past Saturday, April 1st, I attended the River Park Egg Hunt for the community and that was a great turnout and was very well organized by the River Park Neighborhood Council. I wanna thank them and appreciate their efforts in putting that all together. And it's just great to see these types of activities coming back to in-person settings out in the community. Excuse me, I also attended the Oxnard PD Employee Recognition Ceremony for new hires, employment milestones and for years of service and then promotions. And thank you to our Police Department personnel who were recognized and dedicate themselves to their work. The mayor and I also attended a visit for the No Limits for Deaf Children and Families Educational Center here in Oxnard. I was unaware of this program. They work directly with deaf and hard of hearing youth and their families locally, nationally and internationally. And actually have a center here in Oxnard in District 3. And they do amazing work for families who have a family member or a child who is deaf or hard of hearing and give them additional supplemental help with education, with learning, speech, and they do some really great, amazing work. And so thank you to them for the opportunity and know that that is a resource we have locally but is also a very far-reaching organization. And then thank you to Vista Real Charter High School, who just this morning held mock job interviews for students involved in their high school program. And that is a, similar to an independent study type of program for students who are working towards a high school diploma. And part of what they did for today's event was they came and practiced doing their interviewing skills for job interviews. And the high school was great in organizing it and I sat in to interview three students. And they had a 10-minute interview with some set questions and then five minutes for feedback to them after each round. And it was really great to see that and work with them on that. So thank you to Vista Real for the invite. And as a side note, it was here at the public library and I showed up around a little after nine o'clock. And our staff who were here tonight to receive that proclamation were at the library this morning too and they still stayed into the evening to come to the council meeting. So thank you to our staff. All right, last two things. South Bank will have their Neighborhood Council meeting on April 20th, 6:30 PM at Rialdo Norte Elementary School. And that particular neighborhood is shared by Councilmember Perillo and I. And so I just wanted to make that announcement for folks who live in that neighborhood. And the last one is Sierra Linda. The same evening, April 20th, at 7:00 PM, will have their Neighborhood Council meeting at Sierra Linda School in the library. And those are my announcements. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. So I think, I just wanted to say a couple of things I've had a chance to do the past week. I got to meet with the city manager, do a quick introduction and orientation for the council, definitely trying to absorb all the knowledge I can to be effective in working with my fellow peers on this board. I had a chance to take a tour of the Delsol High School. I was invited by trustee Flores Haro to look at the upcoming high school we'll have in the community. I was invited to view the Oxford Performing Arts Center and check that out with the staff and get a view of the facilities. I got to visit this past Saturday some volunteers at the large bulk item drop-off in college estates. There were several members from District 6 that were there, and I got to say hi to them, got to talk with them and meet some of the staff that were doing their job and the service that they provide for the community to make sure our alleyways are clean. Very happy to see it was heavily utilized by the time I was there, both in the early morning and in the afternoon. Also got to join South Winds Neighborhood for food distribution on the 25th, helping out to provide for the community. And also went to South Winds again this past Saturday for an Easter egg hunt that was sponsored by the LWU Local 46 to see plenty of the children out there, having a fun, exciting, fun time out there and providing resources for the parents as well. And last, and tomorrow there will be a Cal Geisler Neighborhood Council meeting at Harrington School, I believe it's at 6:00 PM. And then next week on the 12th, South Winds will also be having a Neighborhood Council meeting at Hickok School. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just as a final note, one of the groups that I participated in is the National Latino Peace Officers Association of Ventura County. And last Thursday, we did our annual scholarship banquet, myself and the mayor were there. And by the way, I was remiss in not passing on the mayor's comments about congratulating you for your election and saying that you have just joined the best city council in the county of Ventura. Those are his words. And then the other city councils are mad. Talk to the mayor. But I, I think you've joined an excellent organization, so congratulations. And he thinks so also. So welcome aboard. We had our annual scholarship banquet last Thursday night, and we awarded about $21,000 in scholarships to high school student, high school seniors and college students to further their career in any type of public service, be it into the legal business, nursing, law enforcement, whatever. We, we look at all applications. And please don't be deceived by the, the title. When we say National Latino Peace Officers Association, that's our organization. But anyone is allowed to put in for a scholarship if they meet the education criteria and the development criteria. So it was an exciting night. We had some excellent, excellent candidates and looking forward to the future. So if there are no other comments on this, Councilmember Perello?
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the members of the public that came tonight. It's been a long time since we've had a large crowd. I wish they would often, often feel that they wish they would stay. But anyway, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Tonight on the ceremonial calendar, the Sexual Assault Child Abuse Awareness Month and the Library Week, the City of Oxnard yesterday put out, last night, missing young girl. And we spread it out, the city put it out, I shared it with a lot of people, and I got feedback, a parent's worst nightmare. Fortunately, the child was found. This is a big deal. It's a big deal. We all come from families, some functional, some non-functional, but we all come from families. Somebody misses, somebody who's missing. And so keep your eyes and ears open. With respect to the library, my very first experience with City of Oxnard was coming to a council meeting and not understanding how the rules worked and getting an education from, and a tremendous amount of assistance in finding out how things worked. It wasn't from staff, it was from members of the public, one specifically, Mr. Lawrence Paul Stein. And he showed me where to find the agendas, where to find the history, where to find that, and from there, things took off. But I've worked with neighborhood chairs, one in particular, Herb Smith. The comments that were made this evening about the library, all of them were factual. I've taken advantage of some of them, not very successfully, the computer learning, I'm not skilled at that. But the things that I have seen done by volunteers that have assisted this city and the people that work their tails off for the library are learning how to read. Learning how to read is something that most people take for granted. Learning how to read, coming from a different culture, not understanding the language, there are people that are volunteering, and that, my hat goes off to Mr. Herb Smith, former third-grade school teacher, put a tremendous amount of effort into it, as well as a lot of other people did. The comment tonight by Reverend Runyon, he's 100% true. We did have a difference of opinion in the back, in the parking lot. And ladies and gentlemen, if you ever get a chance to talk to this man, it will serve you very well. It'll be time that you will remember some of the best spent time that you've had, and you'll end up laughing. He's great at that. We didn't always agree after those discussions, but we agreed to talk and I looked forward to hearing him talk. And with respect to that, I remember the first time when I was sworn in here. Tonight, we have a new member sworn in. I remember Mr. Runyon giving me some advice. And Greg, I still hold it to heart. Thank you very much for that advice. I want to also thank FIRE, and I don't know the rank, and I apologize, Jaime Villa. There was an issue with respect to potentially COVID, and I got a check. And I want to thank Mr. Jaime Villa for helping me out. He helped me and Mayor Protem McDonald. And I want to take a minute, my own personal, to share. I married into, I married into someone who worked in the medical profession. So I've had some experience with medical profession. Very recently, I had an opportunity to, and it's not an advertisement, but it's going to sound like that, had an opportunity to go to something called the Spencer Eye Center in Oxnard. Gonzalez wrote, "Never, ever, ever have I been treated like I was by the staff and the doctor." I'm going to have a procedure. I don't know if it'll work out or not, but I'm saying that before the procedure because I don't believe, even if it goes south, that I would change my mind. The standard that blew me away when I went into that building and was treated the way I was, and it wasn't because they knew I was a council member. They didn't know. But I'm very grateful to live in a city that has people like that, professional people like that, working in that city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Mondragal?
Thank you very much. Keep it short. This past Sunday, I had the privilege of attending a food bank ran by Campesinos, Campesinos, at the old Oxnard High School. It was not only a food bank, but also served as Caesar Chavez Day celebration. There was about 300 residents there at the event. And I know it was a coalition of different groups that runs that event once a month. And kudos to all of them for all their hard work. I know it begins at 7:00 AM, and they're there till about after 4:00 PM. So great job to them and continued success.
Thank you. Councilmember Tran, did you have another comment?
Thank you for the extra time, Mayor Protem. Very quickly, I did just also skip over one of my points here. On Saturday, I also attended the Spring Fair, Resource Fair by Nyland Promise over in Nyland Acres, and it was very well done. They had a great turnout, several hundred people, I think, came out from the community to receive a number of resources that are available to them through the community. And the second thing, or the last thing is, we had our Youth Coalition of Oxnard request to be agendized, and I did see our city manager go and speak with them briefly. But I would like to just put on the record, I'm hoping that we can find some space for them to present to us as an appointment item in the coming month in May. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perello?
Yes, thank you for indulging me. I apologize. I didn't seem to see my note here. I did have the opportunity with Mayor Zaragoza, Mayor Protem, Brian McDonald, Councilmember Tran and myself to attend the police recognition. There were members of the city staff, there were city manager, assistant city manager, deputy city manager. I believe the city attorney's office was there. It's a sort of like an in-house thing for the police department to recognize. But ladies and gentlemen, whatever your views are of law enforcement, when something goes wrong, you call a cop. You don't call a councilman, you don't call the mayor, you call a cop. And when you have the opportunity to see some of these people receive their PIN, their badge, the first time they get a badge, or when they get a promotion, it was extremely impressive to watch some of these officers' little children come up and pin their fathers, two in particular. The officers kneel down so the kids can pin the thing on their badge. Or somebody's father pinning it on their son, former police officer, or a wife pinning it on the, the husband, and vice versa. And I thank you, Mayor, for letting me bring that up. But it was really an impressive ceremony.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on this item?
Mayor Protem McDonald, there's no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you. That takes us to item L, review, or I rather, Review of Information Consent Agenda. Do any council members wish to pull any of the items for discussion off of info consent? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, K3 and K4, please.
You said 3 and 4?
Yes.
Go Public Works Department and Police Department, correct. Any other requests? Are these just for comments, or do you want to vote on them separately?
Vote on them separately, please.
Councilmember Tran?
Thank you. I just have some questions for K4.
For 4?
Yes.
So that leaves us items 1 and 2. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on info consent?
Mayor Protem McDonald, we have no speakers virtually or in person for those items.
Okay, then that being the case, let's, I would request a motion for items 1 and 2 on info consent. We can vote on those?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Member Mondragal and a second by, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, senior, senile is catching up with me. Motion by Councilmember Valenzuela and a second by Councilmember Tran. Please vote on those two items.
Motion passes 6 to 0.
Okay, and then we will now pull out number 3 for individual discussion and individual vote. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, first, I want to apologize. I had some questions, but I didn't have a chance to follow up with staff. I'm still working on the transition right now. So actually, a couple of questions, I guess, for the Public Works Director on this. I just wanted to clarify, are these funds for this contract, are they coming from the enterprise funds? Or from the general fund?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members, Michael Wolfe, Director of Public Works. To the extent that the facilities are enterprise fund facilities, the funding will come from enterprise fund. To the extent that they are general fund facilities, it'll come from general fund.
All right, thank you. Does the city have custodial, current in-house custodial staff that isn't being contracted out or current other, do we have in-house and other contracted custodial staff for the city?
Yes, we do. In fact, we have a mix of custodial staff that are in-house staff members and then contract services like this.
I guess the next question is like, how come there isn't, how come there's a divide between both in-house and, and I guess contracted out staff?
So most of that will be consistent with past practices in terms of where we have custodial staff, to the extent that the staffing approved by the budget process allows for in-house staffing. You know, some places where the custodial services are more technical in nature, where it's specific types of services may necessitate contract services that may not be specialized in-house. So there's quite a, several reasons why those, those services may be contracted out versus, versus in-house. But the majority of it is if we only have five full-time equivalent custodials, we can't actually do the amount of service that's required in all these buildings.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this particular item? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Wolf, you explained it, I believe correctly, my understanding. When we have five people that are in a position to do the work?
I was just making up a number. I was like, if we have like five people, it's difficult to do 116 buildings.
If we had, if we had X number of people that could do specific amount of work, and all of a sudden, if we had 2X worth of work, we don't have enough people to do it. That's my understanding, correct?
Again, the total number of approved FTEs for custodial staff members do not represent enough to do all the custodial work for all the buildings that we have.
Okay, and thank you. And, and according to the rules of the road and the legality, whenever a job goes out for some extra work, we bid the job out. We put the job out for public bid, meeting the standard criteria of public bid, which the city of attorney's law office keeps us in line. Am I correct?
So for public projects that meet that criteria, we do follow the procurement process that is a bidding process. That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Tran, do you have a comment on this item? Okay, if the comments are concluded, then a motion would be in order? Okay.
Second.
And Madam Clerk, we have a motion on item 3 by Councilmember Vasua, a second by Councilmember Perello. Please vote.
Motion passes 5 to 1.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to item number 4, Police Department. And Councilmember Valenzuela, your questions for the chief?
Yes, I guess the question I have is, I think, for, I guess, for this, me, this city attorney or the city clerk for parliamentary procedure, is it possible to, to approve part of this list, request list, and like, I want partially, and then do the other part?
No, if we vote, we would vote on the whole list. So you would either be in favor of it or not in favor of it.
All right, thank you. So I guess for me, actually, for some of my comments, where, and I, looking at the staff report, most of the stuff that can be purchased by civilians for the vehicles, the trailers and so forth, I guess, you know, and I understand the need for reinvesting into rifles that are already being, I guess, the proper terminology would be retired for like their life cycle, like losing precision and so forth. And the use of chemical agents, or I believe it's tear gas that was in the report, for practices where it may have been needed revolving folks. But I guess partially for me, I, you know, would be more inclined for the equipment, the vehicles and trailer itself. But I'm not feeling very comfortable about continuing purchasing more firearms or other chemical agents. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I'm just hoping that we can take a moment to, for the benefit of the public, talk a little bit about taking a step back, what this item is, how we landed on the phrase and classification of military equipment, and just a brief explanation of that.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. AB 481 was introduced over a year ago in cities across California. And what it did is essentially through government code section 7070 through 7075, defined what military equipment was in a number of broad categories, which, though it's called that, it's not necessarily equipment that is either comes from the military or is necessarily built for the, for the military. And the example that we, we would use for that would be a mobile command post, which is essentially a motorhome with radio communications equipment, falls under that definition. We do have three items on this bill for this item this evening that are essentially command post-type vehicles. And so they do qualify as such. But under AB 481, anytime that a law enforcement agency wishes to, to acquire, obtain funding, or to use this equipment, it has to go before the elected body, in this case, the city council. So therein lies, every year, we will have to come before the council to request, to provide the council with a report on the use of this military equipment, which we will detail their uses, any complaints related to that, cost expenditures, as well as the actual inventory. So we will bring that to the council in a later meeting, likely in June, to committee in June, and likely in early July. So purposes of this bill is to keep the, the funding acquisition and use of this as transparent as possible to our community.
Thank you, Chief. And just to, just to kind of go down the list of what's in front of us here, would you mind just listing out just the names of the things that are being proposed through this item?
Certainly. So, in this particular case, we are seeking to approve the purchase and use for, one, DUI enforcement command trailer, where they can coordinate DUI operations from, an unmanned aerial vehicle response van, a traffic collision response van, which qualifies as a command post, these, these previous three items, three patrol sergeant command sports utility vehicles, which are essentially explorers with added radio equipment and whiteboards at the rear of the vehicle, three precision rifles, replacing three rifles that are being retired, as well as replacing 30 canisters of CS gas for our inventory.
Great. Thank you. And I have two points I'd like to make about that list. I hope that it's intuitive to the public that a DUI trailer is literally a trailer that holds equipment or things that would be used for DUI enforcement operations, which are typically grant-funded. The traffic collision investigation response van is exactly what it sounds like, and I invite folks to check out the staff report to get detailed information. The unmanned aerial vehicle response van, it sounds like and looks like, according to the staff report, is a van that is used to help with monitor and track and, and fly the drone that the police department has. Is that correct?
Exactly.
And folks may think, well, what does the police department have a drone for? I think we have a couple, right? Two? Is that right?
We have a small inventory of drones.
Okay. And one thing that I've seen that used for is, one of the biggest complaints we have is around fireworks, and utilizing that to try and understand where fireworks are coming from, try to pinpoint that and get information on that. So the drones could certainly be attributed to enhanced enforcement around that. So I hope folks keep that in mind. And then the patrol sergeant command vehicles, as you mentioned, as well. For the last two, for the rifles that are replacing, so three rifles, to replace three rifles which are being retired, and then the tear gas, it sounds like these are replenishments of existing stock, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. And my last question, Chief, is, just so that it's clear and transparent, these items that are here, we're not going to be giving every patrol car a rifle, or every patrol car tear gas, or we're not going to be giving everybody access to drones. These are specific staff who are trained and authorized to utilize these things, such as SWAT for those last two items, correct?
Exactly. With respect to the, the last two items, the rifles and the gas, those go to our SWAT team, special training, limited issue. As far as the, the drones, that, those are issued to officers that have passed a very rigorous training program and FAA certification process that allows them to do that. So very, very small portion of our police department actually has access to these.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perello?
My, I'm going to ask the questions based on the councilman asking to pull this off the item and wanting to break it up. The DUI enforcement trailer, and Chief, I'm just going to go down the list here. First off, the subject, Police Department Military Equipment Acquisitions. The reason we have the word "military" in Police Department Military Acquisitions is why?
It was based on the language in the, in the legislation that was proposed, and so the author of that bill wrote it as such.
So we, our hands are tied with respect to that. We have to use that language.
Exactly.
Thank you. Going on to the DUI Enforcement Command Trailer. What do we do currently for DUI enforcement?
Well, this is a vehicle, we have a number of different ways for doing DUI enforcement, and, but two of which include saturation patrols. Another method includes doing the sobriety and license checkpoints that we have. When we put that operation out, they typically can go up to, maybe up to two locations in a night. And by having a trailer, we are able to put all the gear into one place, so it becomes highly portable. We are also able to, with, with a command post for this, we're able to conduct the mobile bookings that are necessary for this, and manage everything else related to that operation. So it makes it a lot more efficient.
The traffic collision investigation van, response van, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. We have equipment that needs time to be replaced. Is that correct?
Exactly. There's some very specific equipment that's used in these traffic collision investigations. And I'm speaking of the major traffic collision investigations, such as machinery and equipment that can diagram the scene, for example, portable lights, those types of things go inside, would go inside the trailer.
Thank you. Then we get into the unmanned aerial vehicle response. I know that we've been very successful with the limited use that we have, the drone-type stuff, and it has not so much been just for the fireworks, which is what gets everybody in Oxnard hotter than hell, but it's been for the public safety. And it's not just, ladies and gentlemen, the public safety. Our employees count too. That's called the cops. When somebody's got a gun around a building, you want to know where the hell the guy is. You don't want to have the best available to give public safety and the employee's safety? We need to have employee's safety. This particular thing, definitely. Then we go to the police command vehicles. If we find that people are using these for joyriding activities, I trust that the past, present, and any future police chief will fire their ass. These are worth getting. Now, the big question I have is with the rifles, and I will bring this to the, to Mr. Valenzuela. He asked the question. In any employment criteria, say it's a longshoreman, we have forklifts, we have cranes, we have safety equipment, we have lights. When they are not precise enough for the public's safety, but wait a minute, those are private businesses with employees, so we take public out of it. Now, if we just have employee's safety, and they're not precise enough to provide what they are designed to do, specifically precision rifle, it's got a specific purpose. In the real world, ladies and gentlemen, it's called a tool, and you get somebody that's trained and knows how to handle and use a tool. If we don't have precise tools, we end up having employees potentially injured. I believe my police department put this in there. I have no reason to doubt them. There are people that do not like the police department, they do not like police, I do not accuse anybody on this council of being that way. But sometimes the line of questioning goes in a way, I want my police officer to go home to his family every night, or her family, because they're only in trouble that way. The chemical agent's the same thing. I would hope, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a cop, I have brother-in-laws, nephews that are cops, and nieces. When it comes to the chemical agents, if we just have the chemical agents and those particular tools, rifles, in certain cars, I'm sure that there are times when an officer in a car could use a chemical agent. Maybe there will change in the future. I don't know. I'm not advocating that right now. But I'm not advocating to break any of these items up. I have full support of these items, because I believe that my police department, as long as I've been on this council, not once have they dishonored the job that they've done. Past Chief Whitney has, at a, there was a, there was a community meeting after the gentleman was killed in Minnesota, and it was at a black church. And Whitney, first time I'd ever heard it said, he talked about the number of police officers that have been let go, not because of those things, but over time, our police department is kept in line by the men and women that run the police department. And I have full faith that they will continue to do this. I support this totally. And I mean, no disrespect to Councilman Valenzuela, but when it wanted to be broken up, I needed to say this. I can't shut up on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item?
I will move the recommended action.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mayor Potem McDonald. We have one speaker on, oh, well, we did have one, but he's not available anymore. So we have no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
I'm sorry. So do we have a speaker, or no?
We did, but then he, not available anymore, so we don't have any speakers right now.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Basua, and a second by Councilmember Perello. Please vote.
Motion passes five to one.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes info consent. This will take us to item L, Reports. And with the indulgence of, of my fellow councilmembers, I'm going to ask to move L three up to...
Yeah. We haven't expected either.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Apparently, we've lost our YouTube feed also, so...
You need a motion, move it up.
Sure. We'll take a five-minute recess, please.
All right. It was a person, but, but the thing...
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back. We had a couple minor technical hiccups. I think we've been able to deal with them, so we will go back. I was in the process of asking my peers if they would indulge me moving L three up to the first report. We have the most number of speakers on that. I, I would like to get that done first, so if council concurs, then we'll take L three first. Okay. And it's out of the City Management Department. The subject is consideration of residents' proposal to rename Oxnard Beach Park to the Chumash name, Olocoi Beach Park. And the recommendation is that the city council approves the Community Services, Public Safety, Housing, and Economic Development Committee's recommendation to rename Oxnard Beach Park to the Olocoi Beach Park. And I hope, please, I didn't destroy that name too terribly much. Pursuant to measure M, there was a prerecorded presentation on the city's YouTube channel, and Mr. Herrera and many of his group are here. If council has any questions or follow-up information from Mr. Herrera in terms of clarification, we can take that. If not, we do have a number of public speakers. And if there are no questions, I will start taking the speakers. Okay. Seeing none, we will start with, and I will call the names as, as I receive them, Brenda Guzman.
I personally, personally was not in favor of this name, however, I do support the name change. I want the council and community to be knowledgeable. The name Alolcoi is representation of the dolphin, which is a very sacred part of the Chumash history. And no way is this name changed to be tied or connected to any individual or any one Chumash family or clan. Another thing I'd like to add is the spelling on the agenda is incorrect. There is a Mitzkana Khan dictionary available online with University of Hawaii website, and it's scholarspace.moana.hawaii.edu, and it's on page 94. The, the little apostrophe is not before or after the K, but a B. The little apostrophe is not before or after the K, but above the K, which makes the pronunciation different. So, that's all.
Thank you very much. Casey Rodriguez, please.
Haku, hello. I'm Casey. Tonight, I would like to clearly point out that I'm not personally connected to either of the two sides that had led the name project. However, as many know, I am a very well-known and respected Chumash member in the community, as well as being the 2023 elected Executive Board Member of the California Democratic Party Region Thirty-Eight. Over a year ago, I was one of the first people Manrel Herrera shared this vision to. I am grateful to have seen the beauty of Manrel Herrera's heart has been set with a song sincere to honor Chumash people, which had kept this not-so-easy project going. Thank you, Manrel. I believe Alakoi is their right name. It must be clearly pointed out that this is representation of the Chumash word for dolphin only and not for any individual. Alakoi is easy to say. Everybody comes happier when they see them. They simply call out everyone's inner child to play. The naming of Alakoi will also be a great way to honor our beloved Carmen Ramirez, who fought hard to make sure Chumash representation happened throughout Ventura County. Out of respect and gratitude for all of her hard work, I believe at the naming ceremony, there should also be a memorial dedicated to her. Without her desire to do what's right for Chumash people, I don't believe this project would have made it this far. She truly planted a seed, and now it's time for that seed to blossom. Creating this first day of coming together is vital for the city of Oxnard. It will show all residents of Oxnard that this council acknowledges the importance of respecting and honoring not just indigenous people, but all diverse cultures and backgrounds. I know for a fact local city council members are watching your lead tonight. Your vote tonight can lead her to historical enrichment within all cities that are watching. It is time for city governments to recognize their importance of not just working with, but honoring the local Chumash community. One small note, I sent an email to the city clerk and was emailed saying she would forward the email to you. One council member told me they didn't receive it. I would like to make sure you look at it. There is an example of the spelling of Alakoi from the Ventura and Chumash dictionary that has not been presented to you. With much respect to John Johnson and the letter you got from the Santa Barbara Museum, I believe that spelling in our dictionary is indeed the rightful way to be spelling Alakoi. That's where we have a dictionary, right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Manrel Herrera.
Members of the City Council, City Manager and staff, I am Manuel Herrera, creator of Citizens for a Better Oxnard. In the one-hundred-and-twenty-year history of Oxnard, there has yet to be a significant proposal to honor the Chumash, the original caretakers of this land. That is until today. A year and two months ago, I approached our beloved Carmen Ramirez, a well-known advocate of the Chumash community, with the idea to honor the Chumash by renaming Oxnard Beach Park with the Chumash name. Why Oxnard Beach Park? Because Oxnard Beach Park was and still is a historical and significant area for the Chumash. As you can guess, Carmen loved and fully supported the idea. She then referred me to Chumash elder and at the time chairperson for the Barbareño-Ventureño Band of Mission Indians, Julie Timamite Stensley. She too loved the idea, and with their blessings, I proceeded with my mission. Since then, I have reached out to as many Chumash people as possible and created a small committee, which consisted of local and surrounding Chumash residents. One of them is Mary Ann Parra, who has an impressive track record of representing her Chumash community. Together, we created a list of Chumash names that we felt would best honor the Chumash people. In an effort to pick the right name, we set up the following criteria. One, obviously, it must be a Chumash name. Two, it should be as easy as possible to pronounce for all members of our community so that they can embrace the name. The name should be, three, the name should be significant to the area of Oxnard Beach Park. Therefore, our choice of Alakoi Beach Park, Alakoi is the Chumash name for dolphin. The dolphin is a sacred animal to the Chumash and is even part of the Chumash creation story. Oxnard Beach Park is also known for a pod of dolphins that reside in the area, and the dolphin is also used as the logo for the Barbareño-Ventureño Band of Mission Indians. Our committee can assure you that we have done everything possible within our power to be as fair and to be as fair as possible in picking the right name to honor the original caretakers of this land. We hope that you will make history tonight by being the first council members to truly honor the Chumash people. Lastly, I wanted to thank Brenda Kuki Guzman, Casey Rodriguez, and all the Chumash people who have given their voice in support of our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Parra, please.
Haku, kianti, kakdi, Mary Ann. Hello, my name is Mary Ann. Thank you all for the jobs that you do and the services you provide. And I know it's not always easy to work with people and compromise when there's a lot of tough decisions to be made within the city of Oxnard, which I lived in Oxnard for many, many years. My grandmother, Anne Sandoval, was a Chumash plant medicine woman. She was born, came here at three years old to the city of Wayne Mu, which is, Wayne Mu was a former village. Our aunt was the last full-blooded Chumash to live in that city. We also have the grandmother, who was the first female to be taken off the island of Santa Cruz, Limu, and baptized at the Mission of Ventura. I think it's really important to understand, the language is a complex language. It is an ancient language. We did take the Ventura spelling, which came from the Harrington Notes from the Mitzkana Khan dictionary. And I believe the spelling they're talking about might be the old orthography because linguists over time changed the spelling, moved commas, and changed the barred letters that are in there. So we took that one because at that time, there was five Chumash last native speakers. Maria Solaris for Somala of San Ynez. I can't think of her name. Maria Ignacio for Santa Barbara area. And we had Candelario Valenzuelo and Petro Pica here from Ventura, as well as Fernando Lobrado, who we are descended from as well. So there's a lot of information, and like I said, over time, the spelling has changed. So we took that spelling from that dictionary that was actually given to us. We have a dictionary for Santa Barbara, for San Ynez, and Ventura. We have a strong relationship with our community. And when I say relationship with our community, our Chumash community in San Luis Obispo, in San Ynez, Santa Barbara, and here in Oxnard. So it's not often, as you know, there's a large amount of Chumash people, so to keep a good flow of community and service to each other and to talk, we have Mona Tucker, the elder from the Yakhtik Titu Tahini and Northern Chumash. That is Northern, the Northern Chumash. That is the hardest and oldest Chumash language that we know of, as I pronounce the name. She reached out to us to have, for us to help her. We have talked to her. There is many relationships that don't come by easy and gaining that trust and knowing that we're here to do the right thing. So with, we're asking you to please honor the Chumash and the ancient history that comes along from this coast here in Oxnard and Ventura, Santa Barbara. We want to remember our ancestors. We want to honor them. We want to work together as cohesively as possible. Over time, many of the same families keep showing up and do the work, so I ask you to humbly, please, vote yes on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alakoi Parra.
Haku, haku, kianti, kakdi, Alakoi Parra. I'm a Chumash native who has grown up in South Oxnard. I come here to ask you to vote to approve the renaming of Oxnard Beach Park to Alakoi Dolphin in the Kiaklu i Mitzkana Khan, the language of Mitzkana Khan or Ventura. My grandma Parra lived in Colonia, where it was safe to be a brown woman practicing her culture and medicine. Outside her home, she endured several acts of racism from people who were quick to label her as an Indian witch. In a time where it was lethal to be native, she never denied who she was. She was proud of being Chumash and made myself and my family understand being Chumash wasn't a shameful thing, but a powerful quality we possess. Because of that, I've always been involved in my culture. At the age of eight, my grandparents brought me to monitor my first village site, Humaliwu, which is now Malibu, and was given the titles of being a traditional singer and dancer by my elders. I treat these titles with respect as I'm not running around claiming to be blessing or dancing for anyone or any event. I'm in community with my tribal members throughout our territory from San Luis Obispo County to Ventura County, and this item is something our indigenous youth have been excited to work on. It gives not only them, but us, a sense of pride and belonging. Once again, I urge all of you to vote in renaming Oxnard Beach Park to Alakoi. Ikikmiapin, ho'oi, alakoi, al, alakoi, ho'oi, ho'oi mai pe. Kakina liu. Thank you all. I yield my time.
Thank you. Robin Redwater, please.
Haku, haku, kianti, kakdi, Robin Redwater. Hello, everybody. My name is Robin Redwater. As a Chumash woman and a resident of Ventura County, I strongly urge Oxnard City Beach, Oxnard City Council to rename Oxnard City Beach Park. My preference is the original place name, Sapotahui. This would give it the most respect, although I recognize that Alakoi is the next best name, as we have a dolphin pod that lives and visits the beach, and it's a part of our creation story. I am studying Kiaklu i Kaswa'a under the last native, nephew of the last native speaker for our Chumash tribe, James E., and under world-renowned linguist Mary Ann Masum. Doing so has given me access to private family notes that none of the other tribal members have, and these notes were taken by anthropologist Harrington and all the info provided by the Ignacio family on all aspects of Chumash culture and Chumash lives, including village places. As well as consulting those notes, we also spoke to Brian Barbier and John Johnson, anthropologists at the Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History, to ensure that we're bringing you accurate and information to this area. We have also consulted with multiple elders, including those on and off the reservation, and specifically those who reside in Oxnard, and they are in support of the original place name and/or Alakoi. Thank you. Kakina.
Thank you. Angela Wycombe, please.
So this item came before the Oxnard, to the Parks and Rec Commission, and we didn't vote. We didn't vote because we wanted to, we put an ad hoc committee together to go over, because there were multiple name options, and we didn't feel like it was our place to choose one. We wanted to make sure that the Chumash tribe got to choose the name. And it was, they came, and then they came to, the group came to the committee, and now it's here. So we were never given an opportunity to vote on it, but I just wanted to let you know, everyone at that meeting was completely supportive of changing the name. It was just, to what? And so now that we have a name, I want to let you know that you have my support as a private citizen to change the name to Alakoi Park. I think it's really important that we honor the people that were here before and the people that are here now, and let everybody know that Chumash culture is alive. And it's here, and it's local, and it's been here for thousands of years. And the only way that we can continue to educate our community about this culture is if it's available, if it's tangible, if you can touch it, if you can see it. And there's going to be arguments over spellings and histories. You know, when you have a very ancient language, and it's my understanding that was an oral language. So, you know, for me, it's let the Chumash people decide how it's spelled. It's not my place. But let's honor them by honoring their home, their local village, and our park that is very visible with Alakoi, and let everybody know why it's called Alakoi. And picture's worth a thousand words. So anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know that I am in complete support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
Mayor Potem McDonald, we have no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Okay. Do councilmembers have any comments or discussion or any questions for Mr. Herrera in terms of his process? Councilmember Turan first.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody who not only came here tonight to speak on this and those who sent us written comments ahead of time. But thank you to Mr. Edeta and all of the group who really dedicated their time to bringing this item to the Parks and Rec Community Services Commission, to the City Council, and to the committee it went to. It's a lot of work, and this is truly a great example of residents coming together to do grassroots community change for something that they feel is right and is needed, and I applaud them on that. I have a question just regarding the spelling, and maybe it's an administrative question for our folks tonight. You know, my question I wrote down is, is the spelling, is the spelling on the agenda correct then? If I heard correctly from Ms. Parra, it sounds like the crowdsourced information that you all got from multiple sources, this is correct on the agenda, and I see head nods, yes. But we have other folks who are saying there is another documented form to spell it, and it seems like it's the placement of the apostrophe, which changes the pronunciation, if I'm understanding correctly. Regardless, if we vote on this tonight, are we committing to the spelling? Can that be hashed out to be as accurate as possible? Or does the vote tonight lock that in?
I would recommend that the vote tonight doesn't lock in where we place the mark there. Obviously, I couldn't do that on the computers we have, but when it comes to signage, we can design that any way that's correct. So, but at some point, I need someone to let me know which is the one you want. So we don't have to do that on the floor, but to your point, we'll get it correct when we go to print and create the signs eventually.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that we're able to move forward tonight, and we won't be stuck because we're, okay, thank you.
We won't be stuck for typesetting.
Great, thank you. And that is my only question. Thank you.
Councilmember Perillo.
Thank you. A question from Mr. Herrera. With respect to when the J Street drain was changed to a Kumash name, was as much thought, process put into it by the county?
Councilman, I wasn't a part of that, so I don't know the process that was used.
Okay, thank you. Second question. As you know, you have, and in full disclosure, Mr. Herrera asked me probably a couple of years ago about this, and I support the change. But I have recently contacted Mr. Herrera, and I told him there's a concern that I have, taking the name Oxnard totally out of the equation. My concern, Mr. Herrera, is if we take the name Oxnard totally out of the equation. As one of the speakers eloquently, and I appreciate everybody that spoke, the Kumash name is known through three counties: San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, Ventura County. And if we talk about Kumash State Park, people may wonder, well, where is Kumash State Park, Beach Park? And if we were to name whichever name is decided on, followed by Oxnard State Beach Park, that would be much more easily identified and benefit the local area. Not taking anything away from the Kumash people or all the things that have happened in the history of the Kumash people and even the people before that, the Indians, the Indian movement. My concern is also when we advertise our community. We put our advertising with the visitors' convention, and we advertise the Oxnard State Beach Park. We fund some of that advertising, a limited amount. How would you suggest trying to accommodate my concerns?
Okay, well, first of all, I respect your concerns. However, the great news is that due to modern technology, anybody who wants to inquire about any of the parks in Oxnard, all they got to do is Google it, and a list of all the parks will show up. So maybe for the time being, they can, if you guys approve of Alakoi Beach Park, maybe next to that, you can, they can put formerly known as Oxnard Beach Park. So, but to keep the name Oxnard, in my opinion, kind of defeats the purpose, only because we want to... kind of defeats the purpose only because we want to name it Alacoa Beach Park, not Alacoa Oxnard Beach Park. So, but again, to address your concern, I feel that it shouldn't be a problem. Anyone will be able to Google it and find out that Oxnard Beach Park is now Alacoa Beach Park, if you approve this.
Thank you for that input. Thank you.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the community leaders who came out here and spoke and really pushed for renaming Oxnard Beach Park to Alacoa Beach Park. Very moved by your words this evening, and also I just wanted to state that I did receive the written public comment around 3:08 PM today, this afternoon. So those were, I did receive that personally, and thank you to the Parra family and everyone else who came out to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turan, do you have additional comments?
Is there someone ahead of me, Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry?
Is there someone ahead of me? I'm sure there's number two.
No, just Councilmember Perella, but I think he's done.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the thoughts that were just shared. I have just a couple of comments on this. From my perspective, looking at Oxnard Beach Park, folks may recall, and I don't want to use this analogy, but it came to mind right away when the name of the Anaheim Angels was changed to the, what was it, the Los Angeles Angels of Anaheim, right? Okay, but not associating a park with a particular name or a city with the name of a park, if I were to just tell people Marina West Park, Sierra Linda Park, Lathrop Park, I mean, where the heck are those, right? Well, they're all in Oxnard, but they're not called Sierra Linda Park of Oxnard, Lathrop Park of Oxnard. Those are names that were chosen by developers or named after folks who came before. What we're doing here tonight, in my opinion, in honoring the original inhabitants of this land, the name Oxnard is a name that's derived from a family who came many, 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 many years and generations after those original inhabitants were here, and we're looking to honor the original inhabitants in the name change, and I think combining the names of what we have in front of us tonight with the current name just doesn't equate well to me, so I would not be supportive of that. There were some comments too around pronunciation or choosing words that were easy to pronounce, and I know years ago when Mr. Herrera had brought this up as well, there was some other names that were a little bit more difficult to pronounce, and my thought on it was, well, too bad if it's difficult to pronounce. If it's difficult for me, then that's fine, I'm learning something. Someone who comes from out of the area, when they look at the name Wynimi, Port Wynimi, the Port of Wynimi, Wynimi High School, and I know I'm pronouncing it the way that we colloquially will pronounce it, but when someone from out of the area looks at that name, they have no clue how to go about saying that. We all know, because we've all grown up here and we've all learned how to say it, and as time goes on, that's an opportunity here, even Alacoa, which is a beautiful name, I will say. I appreciate the groups having criteria of making, choosing something that is easy to pronounce, but know that my personal opinion on that was, you know, if it's difficult to pronounce, well, we'll learn to pronounce it. We've learned to do that over time, and we should be we should be adjusting ourselves to to be able to honor the folks who came before, no matter, even if it's a little difficult and tongue-twisting for people to do that. They've endured many, many more hardships than making it difficult to pronounce something, so. Anyhow, those are my comments based on the conversation we've had here, and if there are no other comments after me, I'm willing to move the recommended action.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Turan, and a second by Councilmember Valenzuela for the recommended action. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all to everyone that spoke. I'm sorry, please no clapping. Thank you very much. I can understand the enthusiasm, but. Excellent. That takes us back to item number L1. Subject is commitment to the 2016 Downtown Vision Plan and 2019 Downtown Code. And the recommendation is that the city council review and reaffirm their commitment to 2016 Downtown Vision Plan and 2019 Downtown Code. This item did not originate in committee, and pursuant to measure M, there was a required prerecorded presentation on the city's YouTube channel, and Mr. Ramirez is here to answer any questions. Should council have any questions, comments, or concerns about this item? I'm not seeing, not seeing a lot of people say anything, so. Okay, well, it would be a pleasure.
Mayor Protem McDonough, we have speakers on this item.
Okay. Yeah, I was just getting ready to ask you that, and you beat me to it. I have Pam Hogarth. I'm sorry, I'm teasing Madam Clerk. I forgot.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. As you know, my name is Pam Hogarth. I am first and most importantly, a resident of Oxnard. I'm also the board chairman of the Elite Theater Company. I hope you all know about us and our existence and have been to see shows, and a founding member of the Oxnard Arts Alliance, which is a brand-new organization that we're getting off the ground. Upon review of the published information for tonight's meeting, I was dismayed to see that there was no new information to be presented on the downtown art hubs proposed in the Oxnard Downtown Vision Plan. I wanted to ask if there was, has been any forward movement in instituting the art hubs and what that might be, and if not, why not? Although I am a fairly recent transplant to our wonderful city, I moved here in 2020, I found that there is a burgeoning creative community that could make a significant contribution to the growth and economic development of Oxnard. Most of my working life was spent in the creative economy, working in visual effects production, education, and production support. I couldn't escape the arts at home either, as my husband was a fine artist whose day job was as a picture framer for some of the most important contemporary artists in California and internationally. It's frustrating to those of us involved in the creative sector that our contribution to the well-being of our economy and our society are not taken seriously, especially in California, where according to U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis in 2021, arts and cultural production account for over $261 billion, or 7.7% of the California economy, contributing to over 742,000 jobs. Any artist who has rented studio space in a rundown downtown area will tell you that eventually they can no longer afford that studio space because the neighborhood has become the place to be. Money follows the arts. Other cities have proven this. From 2007 to 2014, the downtown Phoenix creativity hub yielded a 105% increase in tax receipts compared to a citywide decline of over 1%. Research into the role of the creative sector in economic development highlights five ways that the arts work. They create a fast-growth, dynamic business sector. They help mature industries become more competitive. They provide critical, oops, I'm just hoping we can move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pat Brown. Yes.
Somebody left their glasses and their notices and everything here. Okay, my name is Pat Brown, and I am the chair of the Five Points Northeast Neighborhood. That is basically from the Five Points intersection and just a little below that, because we're taken in the apartments that used to be a old drive-in movie theater. So anyway, I've been there since 1993, and we have got several more apartment buildings and a condominium complex in my neighborhood. And then they took the old drive-in theater, and they made that into a whole big, large apartment complex. And so we've got a lot of development that's gone on since I've been there, but most people wouldn't even know about it unless they just happen to have a friend that lived in the area that told them to come there. Otherwise, they probably just drive right on by on Oxnard Boulevard and not even notice. Well, it's good that way, but between Sixth and Fifth, on the east side of Oxnard Boulevard and east to Meade Street and around Meade Street, all that area needs some redevelopment, and it's needed it for a very long time. And we've been very patient. We've been very patient. We've not said anything about it. We've not bothered anybody about it, but it's time. It's like the pregnant lady said. It's time. And we also have to, in the middle of all of this, it needs to be low-income housing, the majority of it, and because we've got lots of homeless people that just love that neighborhood for some reason. So we've got to have some housing for low-income, and we need parking spaces for their cars. Now, you may think, oh, they don't need cars. Well, if they're farmworkers, they need cars. Have you ever gone past a field where there were farmworkers out there, and there wasn't a line of cars right alongside the road? Oh, yeah, they all got cars, and they all need someplace for them to park. And right now, we're having a real hard time parking what we've got already. Lots of it is illegally parked, but don't tell anybody because we can't do anything about it. So I would like to see something happen there, and I would like to be in touch with the people who are going to be working on it and charge of it so that I can then keep the residents of the whole neighborhood
Thank you very much.
aware of what's happening and try and make everybody happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Abel Magana.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council and city staff. My name is Abel Magana. I'm the executive director for the Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association. You'll remember that we recently changed to a 501(c)(3) and are also known as the Oxnard Downtown Management District. I would like to just offer a few brief comments in support of tonight's action and a little bit of perspective based on my year's involvement with the downtown and all the other planning that has taken place over the years. But first, I'd like to also shout out recognition to all the small business owners and the mom-and-pop shops that comprise our wonderful downtown. Those people are the hardest-working people because they have to be because it is not an easy place to do business right now currently. And why is that? It's because there's a lack, a profound lack of foot traffic out there. You'll hear that over and over again, and why is that? It's because we lack residential density. So, you know, one of the greatest things that happened as a result of this, the charrette and the Downtown Vision Plan, was that we took action on items. There was the Downtown Code that was adopted, and that made it much easier and much more fluid in terms of getting permits and building things here definitive. You know, for investors, you want to take the guesswork out of things. You want to make your assumptions as reliable as possible. And the Downtown Code achieved that. It actually made the development feasible here, and I hear that over and over again. I actually have a couple of board, my board members are developers, and that is what they convey to us. So, you know, one of my favorite sayings was from John Lennon over the years. He said, "Life is what happens to you while you're busy making other plans." So I take that to mean, you know, you got to take action too. And definitely, I want to commend staff for doing that because I haven't seen this level of activity in all my tenure here in the downtown, and so let's continue doing that. I think it's important to take this action tonight, though some may say, oh, it's symbolic. It carries a lot of weight because, again, action, you got to plan the work and work the plan. That's another one of my favorite sayings. Otherwise, you know, you have plans that just sit in a desk, and I can tell you, I have plans going way back that sit in my office, and they're just, they don't do anything on their own. It's the people that are working the plan. I would like to close also too by just offering that there is the Downtown Settlement Fund. I would just suggest that maybe we leverage some of those monies to create incentives for small businesses to come in here to incentivize, you know, the readaption of some of these commercial buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Huber, please.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. Congratulations, A.J. Arthur. It's been a long time for this vision to come for you, before you. I'm the chair of the Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association, and when I go around the city and explain to some of the founding families and lots of folks have been around for a while, and I said, "The downtown is transforming," and they said, "I will believe it when I see it." Well, tonight, I'm asking for your support so that they can see it. The reason why I volunteered to be the chair of the Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association is for this vision to come forward. It is a plan, so that means there'll be changes, but it is a vision that has been needed for a long time and is wanted, and is going to transform our downtown. Districts aside, our downtown needs to be vibrant so that your districts will be vibrant. So we want people to come and live here. 500 housing units in downtown. We are looking forward to figure out how to make that work with the city together, and thanks to Emilio and his team, and thanks to city manager for supporting this vision, and thank you. Hopefully, you'll support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Aurelio Ocampo, please.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Protem, staff, and everyone in the community. My name is Aurelio Ocampo, and I am a small business owner. I am the founder of Friends of Campus Park, also a member of the Oxford Community Planning Group and the Congress for the New Urbanism, a board member there, California chapter. I fully support the the staff report, the vision report, and the seven big ideas that came from that. Just, I guess I'm coming up here, I know that I don't think there's an action item on this, but just coming up here to support it and just to keep some things in mind. So there's the seven big ideas from that report. One, transform Oxnard Boulevard, A Street, and the Colonia Road Bicycle Connectivity Plaza Park, Downtown Art Hubs. I just want to make sure that the city council keep, you know, they keep things and some things in perspective. When the new development comes to downtown, we have to make sure that what is our identity in terms of architectural style? What is our charm? How do we identify ourselves? So keep those things in mind when the new ideas come. Keep things in mind, like expedite some of these bike paths. We're having, our world's changing. We're going to start focusing on the cores of cities, right? At the same time, respecting the natural spaces. So what, you know, our group is, our philosophies- So what, you know, our group is, is, our philosophies, and these are becoming mainstream, is developing in the cores, but also respecting the natural spaces. So what is that new downtown identity going to look like? And, you know, how fast are we going to move on these, you know, bike paths, these new movements? We're going to have new, the new generation coming, coming back from universities, experiencing all these new things in terms of transportation. And so, and also for Plaza Park, I'm, I'm just a little nervous of, of the heights of the, the buildings that might come, come in and, and the, and the density, like we want density, but, you know, just, I, I'm personally a little nervous, but I'll, I'll let that, the, the public and everyone else decide on that. But, yeah, so just keep those things in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Clark, any additional speakers?
Mayor Pro Tem McDonough, we have no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments. This came to us about a year, year and a half ago, and I had heartburn over the elimination of parking. And I made a comment about it, and I was later told by a staff member, "Oh, you could have pulled that part out and voted on it separately." And I said, "Okay, well, you tell me that after we're done making the decision." And another staff person said, "Well, in 20 years, we're not going to drive cars anywhere. We're going to fly everywhere or do whatever." And I says, "Okay, I'm not going to be here in 20 years. I probably won't be doing that. No, I won't." So, and when I looked at this today, it comes right back to us with the same thing, eliminate parking. And I go downtown to have breakfast periodically because I live downtown, and parking can be a challenge sometimes, you know, unless you want to get up at 6:30 in the morning when nobody's out yet and go stake out a parking spot. So I, I really support the whole idea, except for the elimination of parking. And so I, you know, and I don't want to pull it out separately. I made my comments last time, and nobody listened to them. That's okay. That's their choice. But because of that, I'm going to have a challenge supporting this in its entirety. So I don't know. Councilmember Turan, do you have comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It was actually along those lines regarding parking, and I appreciate your comments on that. We also received a written comment from a member of the public. Have you had a chance to view that, Mr. Ramirez?
I have, thank you.
Okay, and I'm hoping that maybe we can combine Mayor Pro Tem's comments and concerns with the questions that were brought up by the member of the public who wrote in about parking. Can we talk a little bit about just kind of parking in general and what it looks like as it pertains to this item?
Absolutely. Do you want to speak?
Why don't you start, and then I'll chime in?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. As you know, my name is Emilio Ramirez. I'm the housing director. What we are before you is seeking a reaffirmation of prior policies, prior plans and policies that were already adopted by, by the council, including the downtown vision plan, including the downtown code. And those things have resulted in studies for parking, resulted in the arts hub, all those things. Admittedly, this item is specifically about the development of the surplus, the declared surplus sites that the city council declared last year. And we undertook the process to make them available for the surplus process. We have not yet entered into any agreement to sell any of those properties, although we do have offers and we do have development schemes. In recognition of prior conversations with the city council and concerns, we wanted to come back before you to seek a reconfirmation or affirmation of that prior vision in an effort to pursue the development. In that prior conversation and in those documents, it identifies parking as a surplus, and it identifies the, specifically the North Plaza Park, the North Plaza site, Plaza Park site, where the social security building is, as an area where it has an availability to consider redevelopment. Because according to the staff report and that plan that was identified in the staff report, there is what it calls as excess surplus of 1,925 spaces. And it considers the potential redevelopment of those, those potential surface parking lots. In this case, we did declare that surface parking lot in addition to the building that is at the corner of what would be B Street and the drive aisle of Inferno Plaza Park as surplus. And in that process, we have received an offer that we would like to consider, but before we do so, we wanted to make sure that the council is still committed to that vision plan and the downtown code. We will, if, if the council authorizes so, we will ensure that the development is compliant with the downtown code, is compliant with the downtown vision plan, and all the components within it, including the mixed use, including the idea for, or the requirement to park on-site as whatever the law may be at the time, including the downtown arts hub and all of the things that are included in the downtown vision plan and downtown code. And ensuring that we do not lose more parking spaces than what is already contemplated as excess parking, excess surplus in that document. It also identifies a requirement to produce a parking strategy, potentially consider adding more parking spaces somewhere else. We aren't there yet, and we will need to consider that as part of the continuing effort to study the parking demand downtown. But what we do know based on that older document, it, that it does identify that excess surplus and seeks the, the development of that space as identified in the downtown code and the downtown vision plan. And that's what we're after, to produce that economic development, that produce the downtown population with cash to spend in the downtown businesses to feature and honor the historic Plaza Park and the areas around it. And that is why we're in front of you, not because we're ignoring prior comments, but because we are acknowledging them and we want to make sure that before we undertake any, any development agreement, that we do so in a way that is consistent with the prior documents and the current vision.
So if I may chime in to add to that, and I'm going to go to the actual document. This is from the vision plan from 2016. It was clearly published for people under 40 because the font is so damn small. But let me bear with me as I cite a few paragraphs from here. So they did conduct the parking study in the course of putting together this vision plan. And I, I have other global comments about the vision plan, which I'll hopefully can make a little bit later. But the total occupancy, occupancy counts show that at the busiest-
Excuse me, sit a minute. Which page are you on?
It's page, chapter two, page 22 of the 2016 vision plan.
Thank you.
So the total occupancy counts show that at the busiest period, which at the time was Thursdays between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., just 54% of the downtown parking supply was occupied, with both on- and off-street spaces showing roughly the same percentages of spaces occupied. At this peak hour, 1,297 of the 2,833 spaces in the downtown parking supply were vacant. A little bit further down, it says, "The key conclusion that we draw from these occupancy counts is that the most convenient on-street parking spaces are routinely filling up, often with employees' cars, even as less convenient lots and structures sit mostly empty. The problems that this is, that this situation may cause in terms of both a lack of convenient customer parking and the perception of an overall parking shortage cannot be solved by building additional parking spaces. Instead, improved management is required to shift some parking demand, particularly long-term employee parking demand, from the most desirable front door spaces to the currently underused structure and parking lots nearby." So I'll stop quoting the document from there, and I will say that, that's one thing that really needs to be studied and discussed, which is actual parking management. Now, we're fortunate because there's a, there's a, a professor named Donald Choup out of UCLA who spent an entire career analyzing parking demand in, in communities across the country. So what we're not doing is managing the parking downtown, which we don't, I would not argue that we need to do ASAP, but as we get to downtown revitalization and redevelopment and improvement, we will need to do. Thank you.
I guess I would respectfully disagree with those comments, not your comments, but the comments in, in the report. Hopefully he's okay, doesn't need CPR or anything. You know, there's a couple of different dynamics here. One is the, the business downtown, that's what this guy calculates parking, you know. But has he come up here during the tree lighting or any of the parades or anything else and tried to park downtown? And I would venture to guess the answer is no. And I'm not talking about wanting to build more parking, but I don't want to eliminate the parking we have now. And on a Friday night, I was, "I'll come pick you up sometime. Let's go downtown and find a place to eat. There's plenty of places to eat. There's nowhere to park."
If you pay, I'm coming.
I'll pay. You know, and the same, we have the same thing here. We're going to be here probably, I was hoping, we wouldn't be here quite this late, but we are. It is what it is. But we have a system here when people leave this building after 9:00 at night, Officer Cosio there makes sure that we all get out of here safe. Well, the downtown businesses don't have that luxury of having an officer hang around the front door and escort people to their car. So it's human nature for an employee to want to park closer to their business when they know they're going to leave at 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night and not be walking alone to their car. So, I mean, there's a lot of different dynamics here. And if we were to take this whole report and just line out the one line that says, "Eliminate the parking, 55 spaces," I'd be happy. I'd be perfectly happy with that because I, I believe in downtown, but I don't think it's, I, I just, I don't know. I'm starting to stammer now, so I'll, I'll stop while I'm ahead, but I just don't agree with the elimination of parking. Councilmember, comment?
Are they going to eliminate the parking here in our building?
I'm sorry?
Are they going to eliminate the parking here at City Hall?
No, and if I can-
No, they're, they're talking about the north side of Fifth Street, Plaza Park.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And so hearing the concerns that have been raised by council over, it's been a couple of years. So, I mean, the, the first plan really dates back to 2009 where it was eliminate the parking requirements. It was repeated in the 2016 plan. We've come before you probably two or three times where that concern is still raised about the parking. So we really came forward with an incremental approach here of, "Let us try it. Let us try it at these three specific locations so it doesn't reduce all of the parking. We can see how it would work." And so the supply that Emilio was talking about, the current excess of 925 spaces, if we can get the recommitment to the vision tonight, what we're actually asking to move forward is three projects. One of those projects, Plaza Park North, would eliminate 53 stalls. The Petting Zoo site on A Street wouldn't eliminate any stalls because it's just a vacant lot right now. And the former Goldweigs Museum, again, is an existing building, so it's not eliminating. To be clear, though, it does increase demand in parking because you would be building something new on that site. But that would take our excess parking that the study currently shows that we have 1,925 excess stalls, and it would only reduce it down to 1,540 stalls. So trying to take an incremental approach, focus on what the, the vision plan called out for, focusing around your core assets of Plaza Park, work on that. It would allow us to see what happens in the meantime, how we recover from COVID, what new technology does come out with vehicles, where we go with Gold Coast Transit, where all the other sustainable, sustainability transportation options come in. And then I wanted to raise one more new piece of information from the last time we came to council, which is AB 2097. I know as a council, you would like to require parking. AB 2097 doesn't allow you to require parking. The new law that went in, if you're in a certain distance of a transit center, which almost the entire downtown is, even if you chose not to reduce your minimum parking requirements, the state overrides that. That doesn't mean you have to further reduce, and, I mean, you could just not develop your parking lots at all. But in this case, we're only asking for one parking lot to have that authorization. But I did want to highlight that new law of AB 2097 that you cannot require parking any longer in the downtown area.
And I guess that's my big other problem is Sacramento is telling us how to manage our cities. And Sacramento passes laws about parking. And thanks to Sacramento, you can drive down Victoria Avenue, south of Santa Clara River at night and see all the park, parking on the west side of Victoria because Sacramento said it was okay to give builders a low, low modern income project incentive not to have parking on their property. So they don't do it, and there's nowhere to park. And people park across Victoria, and I'm amazed that no one has been hurt trying to get over to their car from the other side. That's, that's my problem with Sacramento doing all this stuff, that they don't have a clue what they're doing for a local community up there. And I just, I'm frustrated about parking elimination, and we say, "Okay, incrementally, we're going to try this and see if it works." So we try it, it doesn't work. How do we get our parking back? We don't because it's gone. That's the whole problem with this, and we're dealing with people in some other part of the state that have no clue where Oxnard is even at, for the most part. And they said, "Oh, we'll pass this law. It'll be good for this, that, the other thing." Well, it may be good for you in Sacramento, but it's not good for me in Oxnard.
Counselor, absolutely, if we move forward with the disposition of the North Plaza site in the way that it is considered now, we would be losing those 54 public parking spaces. So that's, just want to be very, very clear about that. That's, that would be the case. But, or in addition to that, for your consideration, the parking stalls that Ms. Golden mentioned, that study that was completed by Harrison Associates considered that disposition already. In other words, that social security building has been vacant for quite some time. And the removal of those public parking spaces was considered within that, that study. So it was part of the, the excess, excess surplus, is what they call it, condition. So at one point, when we discussed this last year, we talked about the OTC, the parking lot that's next to OTC or the Gloria Market, that is a lot more parking spaces. And in this study, where, or in this staff report, we're not talking about all of those public parking spaces. We're talking specifically about the North Plaza site. Admittedly, the Petting Zoo as well, but most significantly, the North Plaza site, which is 54 spaces.
And I appreciate your response. I, I don't agree with the comments, but I've rambled enough about this. Councilmember, or Councilmember Turan, do you have a comment? You're first.
Thank you. I just, back to my original question, I did want to thank the city manager and Mr. Ramirez for their comments on that or their responses. One thing that stood out to me in listening to our speakers who were here from the Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association, I appreciate them coming out. And I was intently listening to see if they had any concerns that were shared with the written comments we got and then from our mayor Pro Tem about parking. And I, I didn't hear those expressed. That doesn't mean that they may not have them, but I, it sounded like there is support for the item as it is in front of us for a recommitment to this downtown vision plan. And so I just, you know, I, I hear our mayor Pro Tem's side, and I wanted to understand fully the written comment that came to us, and I appreciate the expression in that. My own observation, I do certainly have the fortune to live in the Fremont South neighborhood, which is fairly walking distance from downtown. And when we have special events or festivals, my family and I can walk here in about 20 minutes. And so that being said, when we do drive here for special things, I've personally found the parking garage to be underutilized even on the busiest of festivals or parades or what have you. And as another layer to that, the annual Christmas parade removes street, on-street parking because we utilize the streets for the parade itself. And while parking is tight, we're still able to find parking. And so when I see the study showing that there is actually surplus parking and we're looking at just reducing the surplus in that parking, I could see that working in, in vision, in practice. You know, as Ms. Golden said, we'll, we'll have to have faith that that will work out- You know, as Ms. Golden said, we'll, we'll have to have faith that that will work out the way that staff envisions that it will. I'm willing to put faith in that. And if it doesn't, then we'll revisit, we'll re-study, we'll see what we can do. But just based on right now, 2023, and the years leading up to this, for community events, I think downtown parking is not an unsolvable problem. And actually, when we say there's a surplus in my head, I say, okay, I could see that. So anyhow, those are my comments on this. I appreciate the responses to my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, thank you. I guess I, I was very fortunate, or should I say unfortunate, like, you know, I had opportunity to grow up both in South Oxnard and the downtown area because my parents were divorced. So I was here in the Wilson neighborhood a lot with my mom on F Street. And I think I was very fortunate when the theater opened in 2005, my freshman year of high school. So I was always coming to the downtown area, you know, always spending my mother's money at the movie theaters. But no, I, I definitely see like the benefit of, you know, continuing our downtown vision plan of building mixed-use housing. So that way we could have, so we can, so we, you know, can build up the traffic there for the community. And I think overall, like, I know there's like some hesitation or, or like negative connotations with AB 2097, but I do think it is a much, something that we should be looking forward to, and actually gives us the opportunity to see what new projects will be coming forward, since we're not requiring parking spaces in the downtown area. I'm sure as it continues to grow, you know, we'll have, you know, mixed-use, mixed-use housing and affordable housing for low, very low income and medium income families, to see them going through the community and building up that economic development for our downtown community. So I'm very excited to see how this will play forward. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments by council? Councilmember Perallo.
Appreciate the, the work that's been put into this, and I appreciate the comments from council and the public. I am inclined to agree with Mr. McDonald about the parking. I'm concerned about the parking, but I'm also one foot in, one foot out of the grave. This has been something that's been drug on for a long time. We have the people that are involved in the downtown, they're trying to improve things. We have, the council has taken positions, they want something done downtown, trusting that if we, you know, a little bit, like, nobody can be a little bit pregnant. If we take some of the parking places away, we can't put them back. Absolutely, we can't put them back. But there's a degree of trust that has to be given to the staff, that if they get somebody to come in and develop something, and it's not going the way it should, that the staff will be forth with, up to the council and go, look, this is not working. We can maybe make a change before it gets further down the train tracks. This may not be sounding and coming out as clearly as they'd want it to, but something has to be done. We can't continually wait. COVID gave us a unrequested break. There was a developer that was here at one time that was going to be tremendous things. The economy changed, that was another unrequested break. Something has to be done. I would support the, the project. I would support this staff report, but I, in doing so, I am totally in agreement with Mr., with Mayor Protem. I don't care if you're super rich or super poor, you're going to have people that need cars. And it may be that they are so wealthy that they can just call somebody on a phone and get somebody, but there's going to come a time, they don't want to do that, they're going to have a car. Where do they park? The only personal experience I have with the issues of the parking is I can't park close to the theater on the street and watch a movie because it's a two-hour parking restriction. And okay, so you park in the parking lot. I do agree with Mr. McDonald. There are places where going to get the car in the parking lot, and I see several people. Now, it could be telling that the gray hair on my head, I'm more leery of young guys running around on bicycles or skateboards, I'm going to have a problem. But until the downtown area is squeaky clean with no crime, no vagrancy, no other stuff, I think there's going to be a perception that it may not be that safe to walk further than necessary to get your car. And if there's a choice, people may go to some other community. So I'll take a chance on this, but I'm trusting and putting my faith that these people know what they're talking about.
Thank you, Councilman.
But I hundred percent understand, this has been too long. Like when somebody said earlier, it's time. When it's time, something's got to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I do want to assure you that every step of the way, before we sell anything, we cannot do that without council approval. So we will be back before you to consider any agreement to sell any property, any agreement for, that has to go through the regular process for development, the planning commission, the community development department. All those things have to be undertook. It's not going to happen without your, your approval, your engagement. So that'll, that'll happen along the way, including the social security building, North Plaza site, and any other site thereafter.
I, I am putting my trust in this because I am aware, for as long as I've watched from the outside, and then been fortunate to be up here, things change. What we see and what we're promised, things change. And that's the only part that gives me, yes, a digestion. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodger, and then Mr. Newan, I'll come back to you.
Thank you. Just basic planning, basic, you know, it doesn't matter if you're here in Oxnard downtown, the north end, the south end, something has to be walkable. If a place is not walkable, I don't care how many parking spots, I don't care what business is there, no one's going to be there. It's going to be unsafe. You need people here. Once people are here, it makes things a whole lot safer. People park, you know, go to downtown LA, you go to downtown any large city, you are in for a walk. You go to the collection, you're in for a walk. You have further walks at the collection than you do here in downtown Oxnard. No one's complaining about how far they have to park at the collection. So in all, you know, we need businesses here. It's great that you have many different parking spots, or whatever it may be. Whenever I come to an event here in downtown, actually first thing I look for is not necessarily the walk, it's how am I going to be able to get out of here the fastest way possible, once the event ends. So sometime, it means actually just parking right here across the street on Third Street, heading eastbound. So that way I know that I'll be out quickly. It just means that I'm in for a longer walk. But overall, you know, you go to Starbucks or the movie theater at night, there's, you know, yes, I understand, it, it is a little dark, yes, you know, it's, wish more businesses were open here in the downtown, but that has to do also with, you need to track businesses, and, you know, limited spacing. So, you know, we do need more businesses in the area. Overall, yes, I understand, it's very convenient to park close, and I don't want to beat this for the next half an hour. But overall, we need more people in the downtown. Once we have more people, it'll make the downtown a whole lot safer.
Thank you, Councilman. I, a couple of things. First of all, absolutely, I think a, a larger number of people that are active in downtown begat safety. It does. It, it creates a situation where we no longer have the impact of homelessness, we no longer, because there's a lot of people around. But also, that, therein lies the, the upside of what we're talking about. If, if the public parking spaces is the sacrifice, the upside is the economic development, the jobs, the housing, the, the activity, the businesses, the business growth, the wage growth. All that will, will come as a result of, of this, this effort. Honestly, if it doesn't, then we can revisit as we come forward with other, other transactions.
Okay. Any additional comments? Mr. Newan.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more with all the comments that have been spoken, including concern about parking, although, as you both know, I'm not as concerned about parking. I, I still am a big believer in the fact that we, we are in the exact moment that this country was in exactly 100 years ago, during the transition between horse and buggies to automobiles. So I think that the, the change about transportation, and in terms of how people use cars, and whether or not people own cars, that is literally right around the corner. So, so from that aspect, I think parking as the problem that we've experienced for many decades now, will be resolved by how mobility in, in and of itself will change. I do want to take a few moments just to review some of the broader themes and principles here. So there've been a couple of references to pregnancy tonight. So if, if you want to compare downtown to a pregnancy, it would have to be an elephant pregnancy, which is the animal with the longest pregnancy in the world. So as a reminder of the cities, you know, some of the key realities of the cities since this downtown vision plan was published in 2016, first of all, in, in the ensuing years, City Hall is an organization, as everyone can recall, was not the most functional. And then add to that, so, so we as an organization have been struggling to recover from a variety of, of significant issues. Add to that, then, the pandemic, and that, how the economy changed that and whiplash that so quickly. So, so you added all, all of our experiences around the, the COVID pandemic on top of the problems that we were already struggling with. So it's, you know, it's clear to me why on the city side, we've been slow to make progress. But there's another really important factor here. And with all of these vision plans, the, the thing they all lack is, is a pragmatic discussion about financing. And I've read multiple vision plans, whether it's for downtown revitalization in different communities, or for park systems, or anything else. They all lack a pragmatic approach to how it's financed. So it, it's, it's a great wish list. And when I was applying to be your city manager, this was one of the documents that I studied. And I, I actually believe about 70% of it has some very solid principles. One of them is, and this is following what Councilmember Madrigal just closed on, which is you've got to have people living here. You've got to have a, a resident, residential base to provide a reliable business customer base for the, for the businesses that are here, and the businesses that could come later. And a lot of this has to do with the chicken and egg question. One of the things I thought was interesting about Oxnard, again, when I was looking at this city to come and work here, well, the first thing I thought was interesting was the name. But I've come to believe that it's a, it's a wonderful name that should never be changed. But the, the other thing that I thought was interesting is, in this county, this is one of the few counties in California where the biggest city in the county is not the county seat. It's a really interesting dynamic. But in other counties, where the biggest city has the county seat, there are a lot of government offices downtown, which provide a very, very stable lunch business, a very, very stable happy hour business, which often leads over into dinner business. So that, so in addition to, as most cities downtowns have evolved in the last couple decades, the addition of residential. So there's, there's enough critical mass that will, in and of itself, can entice business investment. So I, I'm fully agree with the vision in, in the sense of the principle that we need to get people to be downtown, to provide that core customer base, which is residential. As we proceed, and, and again, economics plays the major role here, because what we're, all the big ideas here were asking somebody to make a large financial risk and to take, to make a big investment in downtown Oxnard. So we're working, we had some leads right before the pandemic, and we have a few now. A couple of the key points I want to emphasize, though, and that is that this body, and, and I will always advocate and, and fight for, but this body needs to be focused on getting the best design possible for the downtown, especially architectural design. Whatever buildings go up from here on out, especially given our, our stringent building codes in California, they're likely to stand for probably 200 years. So I hope that what we do is we don't settle for the fast projects, because we're so desperate to get people down here that we end up with Southern California beige flat facade buildings that look like every building in Southern California everywhere. So buildings that are going to front Plaza Park, we have to demand great architecture, so that it, it signifies the importance of being in the middle of downtown. I, I fully agree with walkability. Every city on earth that has vibrancy is walkable, and, and especially neighborhoods or different parts of cities. They, so I fully agree, downtown needs to be walkable, which means going forward, we can't allow entire city blocks to be blocked off from people walking through from one street to the other. We shouldn't have this, this continuation of you have to walk around an entire city block to get to the other, the other restaurant or business that you want to go to. So part of, part of going forward is, again, being determined to get the best architecture possible for the downtown, and making sure that whatever we're putting together is first and foremost walkable. And once you get the critical mass of people, you'll have more safety, especially in the evenings. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Basu.
Thank you. I've been awfully quiet this evening, and I've listened to what my fellow council members have said, and I've always been a very big proponent of bringing housing to anywhere within the city. But as Mayor Protemp spoke, and Councilmember Perallo, and everybody else about parking, parking is extremely important, especially here in Oxnard. I understand what this administration wants to do. I understand the vision. I support the vision. But I'm going to take a, a, I'm going to have faith in this administration that, you know, we're going in the right direction. But history tells me that we're probably going to fail. And the reason that is, is because when I look at a downtown, I look at Ventura's downtown, you know, there's walkability to the beach. I look at Santa Barbara, what do they have? They have the beach. You know, we look at Santa Monica, and we look at all those areas that have a downtown that is extremely energetic, and we've got people going. When people come here, we're kind of in the middle of nowhere, our downtown. And unfortunately, that's the way it is. So I'm going to take a leap of faith, and I'm going to say yes to this tonight. But I want to caution us that we should be very, very careful, especially with the architectural, with the walkability. We need to make sure people want to come to the downtown and spend money. And again, I'm a big proponent of low-income housing. I'm going to always, always be a proponent of that. I just, I, I understand what my council members are saying. And I'm going to trust that this administration is doing everything in its power to bring the downtown back. But we, we have, in the past, have not been successful, you know, with the movie theater, with other things that have happened. We just have not been successful. But I'm going to be optimistic about this. I am hoping that we will, you know, cut that cord and be extremely successful with this. So I'm going to really be holding this administration to this. And at the first sign of failure, we just need to be able to stop. So with that, I'm going to move the recommended action and ask for this plan to move forward.
A second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion by- Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Councilmember Basuah, seconded by Councilmember Turan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to one.
Okay, that takes us to the last item on our agenda for tonight, Public Works Department, Water Rate Update Report. And the recommendation is that the city council receive and file the water rates update report. And this item is scheduled for Public Works and Transportation Committee on March 28th. Since the item is a receive and file, and we're already past March 28th, so I don't know what happened at the committee, but since this is a receive and file, that, that committee action really would have no impact on this at any rate, so. And do council have any questions or clarifications from staff? Sir, Councilmember Peralo?
Assistant City Attorney, I mean, the committee accepted the report to pass on to council. That's what we, right. Could you state that for the record, please? This is the Public Works Attorney.
Okay, so, well, we can, we can just acknowledge that Public Works and Transportation Committee accepted it as a receive and file.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And pursuant to Measure M, there was a prerecorded presentation on the city's YouTube channel. And so any other clarifying questions or requests of staff? Councilmember Turan?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Good evening, Mr. Marsenko. Thanks for hanging in there for this item. I, I personally think this is one of the larger items for tonight, and so we save the best for last. So I do want to just ask if you wouldn't mind summarizing the steps that we've taken as a city to inform the public about the water rate study and also the community workshops we had and what we've done up until this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Turan. Again, Joseph Marsenko, Assistant Public Works Director, Water Utilities. We started out in the end of last year and the beginning of this year, holding three meetings in the community to educate them on the needs for the water system. As you all know, we provide water to the entire city and there's a lot of expenses that go into that. We went to try to engage the public and educate them and, and inform them of the, the things that are involved and, and the needs for the water system. And so we ended up working with a consultant, Raftellus, creating a cost of service study that goes in into a rate study that looks at all different areas of the needs, the financial needs for the water system. As a result of that, we came to council on February 11th. We had a special workshop. We went through and, and proposed new water rates over five years. We discussed that and since then, we've moved forward. So this report is for really what we've done since then. So what we did is we went through the Prop 218 process. We mailed out about 86,000 mailers to both the addresses and both our account holders for water service as well as parcel owners, which are required by the 218 process. We scheduled a public hearing to be held on May 2nd. And we also posted the cost of service study on the website. So we have areas for the public where they can go to oxnarwater.org. They can go and, and if they have questions, they can go to the website. There's a lot of good useful information there. They can go through the, the cost of service study. We also have a phone number if they have questions and they can call in, 805-385-8390. And to be able to help them understand what the needs of the water system are.
Okay, thank you very much. And I've seen some great discussion around the item and I can, I can, I appreciate that there are folks out in the community who took the time to either attend the community workshops. I believe we had two in the evening, two on a Saturday, to try and cover the availability of folks and differing work schedules, but also those who viewed it after the fact because they were recorded and people could see them. There are also, or there exists a playlist on the city's YouTube channel of all the water related items and videos, some of them as short as a minute and a half or two minutes long, for people to see exactly what each of these items are regarding water rates and how we've landed to where we are today. And in the end, you know, after having some great discussion with people, if they still disagree, I encourage them, as is their right under Prop 218, send in the form that is on the back of the mailer and, you know, document your protest. And that being said, one last question I have is for folks who may have misplaced their, their protest form. Is there a place at City Hall or on the water website where they can download another one, fill it out and send it in if they haven't sent one in but they lost it?
Actually, they, they don't actually need a form. So as long as they meet the criteria, they can actually send in a back of a napkin, but it has to have, it has to have specific information. So that information is the, either the property address or the APN, the property owner's name, the signature and the fact that they protest. So it doesn't have to be on that form. It could be on any piece of paper that they wanted to submit.
Okay. What's that, Mr. City Manager?
parchment.
Oh, parchment paper, of course. So I appreciate that clarification. I was unaware of that and that's good for folks to know. Likewise, could they come to the city clerk's office, for example, and fill out a form and say, here's my info and then hand it in? Is that acceptable as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, just want folks to know that there are, there's a lot of information that leads into the discussion that we will be having on May 2nd. And I hope folks will review that to understand the, the many factors behind this. And if after seeing all that information, they'd still like to protest, the potential for a rate increase, they have the right to do so and there are some very simplistic ways in which they can. All right, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Marsenko.
And Councilmember, I have one request to speak. So let me take the speaker and then I'll come back to you. That's, so Pat Brown, please. Pat Brown?
Having grown up on a farm in the Northwest with horses and cattle and lots of fruit orchards, I know what it's like. I know what it's like when you run out of water. We would turn the faucet on at the, out in the gardens and we'd forget to turn it off. And in the middle of the summer, you have less water than you do during the winter time, when you've got snow on the ground and whatnot. For some reason, the water lasts better in the winter. Well, since I was the oldest child of four children, my father made me learn how to go down and turn the pump off and prime it, leave it for a while to get some more water in, and then prime the pump and then go turn the faucet back on again. So I know what it's like. And I can tell you that there are lots of ways that we can use our water without wasting it, but we never think about that. We just turn it on and let it run and, and maybe when you turn on the hot water faucet, you get cold water to begin with if you haven't run any hot water recently. And then you're wasting that water while you're waiting for it to get hot so that you can use it to wash dishes or whatever. Also, we only got a bath once a week, once a week. Everybody got a bath and all the little ones had to get their bath all together in the bathtub. Now, I probably have more experience with trying to pinch on water than most of you have. If you've never lived on a farm where you only had a well, we ended up with two wells, one for all the horses and cattle and all of that and their big, huge galvanized round cans that they would, we would put all the water in. And then they'd fight over the water sometimes. Yeah, they did. So, but we had to have two wells because the horses and cattle, we couldn't tell them, I'm sorry, we don't have enough water for you. We had no choice. We can't talk. We talked to them a lot, but they wouldn't understand that. So folks, there's another way to pinch pennies with water and if people really wanted to, they will. They'll find the ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Excuse me, Mayor Pro Temp McDonough, we have no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, I have one quick question. So I know wearing compliance with Prop 218 in regards to sending these letters to property owners and ratepayers, but are individuals who, I'm sorry if I miss this with Councilmember Turan, but are residents who in the city of Oxnard but don't, aren't considered ratepayers or property owners, are they able to protest as well or only those folks that fall under Prop 218's requests?
So to be eligible to protest, you have to be, it has to be associated with a property. So you can be the ratepayer or the customer that signs up that service, or you can be the property owner, one property, one protest.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Peralo?
Yes, thank you very much. This is a very interesting discussion at the Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting. There were a couple, there was a phone call and there was a member of the public that stayed. Some of the issues that have come up since then are why, and I'm quoting from some of the people that are voicing their opinions on social media. If the city is so flush with Measure E money and ARP money, why are we raising the rates? If the city is so flushed they can send out postcards, why are we raising the rates? Can you please explain, excuse me, can you please explain how the Water Department is an enterprise fund and the basics difference between an enterprise fund and the general fund with respect to the funding sources?
Yes, the, the Water Department is an enterprise fund, meaning it's self-funded through rates. So the, the general fund is funded by tax money. And so those two have a distinct separation. So we don't co-mingle money with them. We do have some shared services associated with the workings of like groups like human resources where we draw support from the city. But outside of that, the, the ratepayers' money goes for funding the operations of the water system and is solely source funded.
Thank you.
Councilmember, if I, if I could please though, respond or correct the, the first half of that assumption, which is that the city's flush with money via Measure E. We are not.
Thank you for that.
Measure E provides us with the revenue that we've always needed to run the city. Did not make us rich.
The second part is, I believe Councilman Turan addressed it, there's a tremendous amount of information. And we have some keyboard warriors at night that hear something and all of a sudden they fire away. They don't take the time to do any homework, look at anything and, you know, just think, what costs less five years ago? And I think we last addressed this five years ago.
That's correct.
What costs less than it did five years ago? And if you expect the water to cost less, well, okay, I can give you that. But do you think the chemicals that treat the water? Do you think the labor? Do you think the replacement of the pipelines? Do you think the electronics? Do you think the, all the other rigmarole stuff that goes with it costs less? If you do, I think you're wrong. And specifically, one person addressed me and they said, well, you know, you want to raise it this much money and this and that. And I said, well, you know, take a look, take a real good look. When we come to these meetings, these public meetings and people walk in with Starbucks cups of coffee, a nice Starbucks cup of coffee is more than what the rate is going to increase in a month for some of these fees, some of these, some of these groups of fees. The Prop 218 process is something that's in place. It's, we can't get around it. It has to do with the Prop 13 and everything else. For people to just want to protest and not, you know, pay any more money. Take it from me, ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to pay any more money than I have to. But I want to have potable water. And Joseph, explain what potable water is. Somebody may not know. It's a fancy term and it's a technical term. What is potable water?
Potable water means that it, it is a quality associated with it, that it's fit for human consumption.
Drinking water?
Drinking water, yes.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, if we don't get the money to take care of our system, do you want to cut the standards of our drinking water? You may want to. Everybody may want to cut corners. But if we do that, we come up against state and federal rules. Joseph, are there specific requirements for potable water?
Oh, definitely, definitely. I mean, we, we've just, in, in part of our outreach information, we've analyzed in the last year over 3,700 samples to make sure that the water quality is suitable for consumption for over 300 different test analytes.
And, and ladies and gentlemen, I don't see any way around having the water rates have to increase unless people stop drinking water altogether. And you still are going to need to flush your toilet. You still are going to probably want to put some water for your animal. We're still going to have to be able to supply all the people that have water and decide not to turn the faucet on, in case they do turn the faucet on, that there's water for that house. That's an obligation of the city. The city can't go, I'm done. You're going to be on your own. Go get your own water. It doesn't work that way. And I hope the people take a little bit of time and do a little bit of reading. I know it takes time, but do a little bit of reading. The information's available because the rates, we're not gouging. I'm not thinking that we're going to have gold-plated shovels and trucks and Cadillacs all over the place. It, it's not what is going on with the enterprise funds and the public works. Thank you, Joseph.
Councilmember Madrigal, do you have any comments?
Just something real quickly. I know it came up with Councilmember Valenzuela. Since the city, or actually all cities, have been building a whole lot more ADUs and they have separate water meters, would the aspect of one protest vote per property still be valid? Or eventually, as you know, this evolves, maybe we'll get to the two because there, there are two separate water meters in, in a residence?
It, it's still within the same property or parcel. So even though they have separate meters, that would still be one parcel and one vote.
Okay, so, and then going back to that then, if you live in a multi-unit apartment complex or whatever they mean, duplex, triplex, it's one, one protest vote?
One parcel, one vote.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
This is a receive and file. I'm not seeing any more requests to speak, so that will be the direction. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.